I'd like to call to order the regular meeting of the Florida School Committee, November, October 19th. Deb, please call the roll.
Mr. Agnew?
Here.
Mr. Costa?
Here.
Mr. Hart?
Here.
Mr. Hetzler?
Here.
Mr. Corey?
Here.
Ms. Larrabee?
Here.
Mayor Coogan?
Here. Josh Hetzler is joining us by Zoom. Could we please salute the flag?
(inaudible) the flag of the United States of America, the republic of which stands on one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Pursuant to the open meeting law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting or may transmit the meeting through any medium. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions are being made, whether perceived or unperceived by those present, and are deemed acknowledged and permissible. Citizens input, Deb?
There's no one signed up there.
Thank you. Recognition awards, there are none tonight. Superintendent's report, Dr. Malone.
Okay, thank you, School Committee. There are two items that I'm going to talk to you under my report. I'm going to start with item, the second item, which is a capital update. First and foremost, I want to thank the Ken's team, the operations team, capital products maintenance, but also the city who supports us for all the projects that have been ongoing and completed on the far-right public schools over the past eight months. So, I want to give you a rundown very quickly. Durfee, Durfee, the pool has been tested and is ready to be finished, meaning the final tile, the spray before water is added. The Health Wing, the former PIC, is almost completed in terms of final touching, what do you call it, punch list items in that area, so that we would receive back the wellness classrooms and the brand-new fitness center. Duck work and electrical upgrades, ceiling fans have all been completed in the fieldhouse, as is the white coat of paint on the roof. The main building work is following a south-to-north pattern with painting and whiteboard installation progressing each day. Ceramic tile on the walls progressing in the main corridors, as you can see as you walk in, the accent walls and the main walls with the tile. Tile's about five feet in total from the floor to the top of the tile. Really looks outstanding. The exterior of the fieldhouse is being abated in preparation of the metal stud framing and the hottie board installation, as you can see that also as you go by. The front entrance, exterior stairs are being constructed, the interior main stairwells are being fabricated in place. The boiler plant for the main building is taking shape and will be ready to supply heat to the entirety of the building very shortly. Total construction workers on-site each day is averaging 268 employees every single day. At the Watson School, the window lintels are being demoed, new lintels will be installed, followed by the window units being installed. The windows are, have arrived on-site. The boiler is also, has been installed and inspected and started up, scheduled for some time this week. I actually went down to the boiler room to see that work ongoing, and I could tell you they did an excellent job working in a very confined space. I want to thank also members of the fire department for doing the fire watch during that time as well. The contractors working 12 hours on Wednesdays and Saturdays at Watson to complete the work. I want to thank the teachers who on Wednesdays, on their remote days and their planning time days, have been working from cuss. I want to thank them for that extra effort and for being patient as we get that building ready. At RPA, the ramp has been completed out front. If you drive by, you can see it. Railings are being installed. The boilers are also being installed and piped in. Temporary boilers are on-site and will be used if necessary, as needed. The new entrance and receiving hall are receiving their finishing touches, and the roofs are completed and flashing is being installed. Roof terrains are also being upgraded, and as a side to that, the new trailer for the movie Jungleland is out, and you can see that building featured in that film. Trailer looks very interesting. At Westall, Stone at Westall, the roof has been installed and is complete. The access hatch is operational. The two boilers have been installed. The chimney liner has been installed. We actually tweeted some pictures of that being installed from a gigantic crane. The boilers have been inspected, and they're also scheduled to start up this week. The office glass curtain walls are nearing completion with only two schools in the entire district actually awaiting their curtain walls, and I want to thank Ken and his team for getting that done as well. Very excited about all that work that's been happening in the schools. On the technology side of this work, we're proud to report that as of today, we have 9,941 student devices on hand. We have in reserve, based on purchasing, we did in August and September, 1,568 devices. Our team, Scott Cabral and the members of the team have repaired 1,345 devices in that time. We have 94 devices from last year that have not been returned to the district. 94 out of the 3,500 that we've put out. We're going to be working, continue to track down these devices and get them back. I have trust and confidence in the members of my team to be able to do that. In terms of hotspots, remember we purchased 1,000 hotspots. We have 460 out in the community, in homes, in service. We have 540 ready to deploy as needed, and we are also set to receive an additional 500 Chromebooks in December to add to our portfolio. One of the things I just want to be real clear about is remember, right now MCAS testing is on, the state said it's on. So, we have all these devices in the hands of students. We're going to be asking students to use those devices for their testing, but we know we're still going to have to load each school with carts and probably at least 100 or so at the elementary, middle level, and then probably five times that at the high school to be able to accomplish that MCAS testing if and when we get there as planned later in the year. So, that is the operational report of capital and technology.
Mr. Superintendent, on the Capitol end, Mr. Hart had a question.
It wasn't so much maybe on the Capitol end, but just on two quick things that you mentioned, Mr. Superintendent. And one, you just brought up about the remote and the students that are working from home. Are we comfortable now to say that every student that is working from home has their Chromebook?
So, we're comfortable that every student has a device, whether it's ours or theirs.
That's fine.
Could be debate, but we're over now because the next item I'm going to present to you is the total number of students, and you can see that based on the total number of students that we have, we have more than enough devices. We're also continuing to purchase devices for the adults to get them with the 2020 models of all the tools that they have. So, the answer is yes.
Okay, great. That's fantastic. The other thing too is when you were talking about the facility, facility and the fitness facility, and those things seem to be coming their way with this pool almost completed. And I know, I remember maybe back, boy, this was probably at the last budget hearing here, and the question was asked for the, regarding the fitness and athletic director, I think I'm calling, I think Mr. Costa asked for a kind of a narrative of, for, you know, for the employment for that, hiring that type of person. Is that, is that completed?
It's on the agenda tonight.
It's on the agenda tonight, okay. Now, you're going to go out and bid, and you're going to interview for those positions correctly?
When we get to that point of tonight's meeting, I'm going to propose that, yes, we approve those and then post and work to hire.
Okay, because I think maybe you agree, I know we've talked about this in the past, that it's probably right now a very good time to get someone in there in that capacity.
We agree wholeheartedly. You know, Ken and I have been working very closely to monitor the, you know, we likely have these areas turned over already, but we got to finalize the heating component of it to make sure that we have heat, that we can turn those over. So, as soon as they're turned over, they're going to be ready for use, so, which is a A, twofold great thing. One, for the students, the seniors who are at Durfee who will graduate and miss this new building, they'll get a taste of what that looks like in the wellness rooms and the fitness center. And B, our employees will be able to also have access as well as our athletic team. So, it's a win-win for everybody in terms of that space.
Absolutely. And when do you think the, we'll be able to access that facility for?
It's all depending on final boiler and heat connectivity, so I'll have better information in terms of the actual date sometime next week, but we have to have it, it has to be heated to, of course, to a certain degree to be able to have the turnover successful. So, we're assuming within the next few weeks.
Okay, thank you. I yield, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, so, the next item is the major part, and I know you guys will have questions. And this is-
Mr. Mayor, I had a question on the other part before he goes on to the-
Sorry, Kev.
No problem. So, two questions. One is on the Durfee project. I've been mentioning over and over that I'm concerned about the baseball field that's not as part of the project. I was wondering if there's any updates on any potential completion of a baseball field there, so when that project is all done, I know you all know this, that the baseball field is not scheduled to be included, and I'm just concerned that we're going to have a brand-new facility except for the baseball field.
I mean, so, I mean, I can have Ken say some things if you want, but, I mean, Ken and I have worked closely with this. We, you know, we've done a study, we have, we have all the information we need to have about what we need to do there. Problem is, is there's no money. So, I'm hopeful that during the course of this year, we have conversations with this body as to maybe some decisions we can make to take, to like, take a look at how we can complete that baseball field that needs to be raised and drained and those aspects. So, in terms of your question, we, this is a priority for us as well. It's not something that, that you're on an island thinking about, where I think we're all concerned, but we're also talking about the, I don't know the right term, re, skinning is, adding the turf to the two fields that are currently turf, because that's also in need of repair. So, we know that we have the baseball fields, the turf fields, that whole field area, and right now I have no money to do anything. You're right, it's not part of the project, but my advice, perhaps this group can refer that to the facility subcommittee, we can have some discussion and then bring something forward to the full committee.
Yeah, I mean, you, I know you mentioned that there was some kind of plans or something that you had.
Yep.
I think we paid for the feasibility study.
Well, we did our own study as to what it would cost.
Maybe Mr. Pacheco can comment on that, because I'm, we're all in the dock on that right now as far as getting numbers, what are we looking at, so that we're, what I don't want to have happen is we just, I know we say we're on it, but time's going by, and the spring's going to be here, and then, where are we at? So, maybe if we could ask Mr. Pacheco to-
Yeah, we can come up, but it's likely we won't have this done this spring.
No, but at least a plan, like, you know, just a plan. While we're talking about that same thing, I know we spent $10,000 during COVID to fix North Park. I would recommend that, just driving up and down the Seven Hills, you look to the left there, that field looks like it never been touched, even though they, they did, but might want to have a combination of either our guys or somebody go in there and, whatever the technical term is, dig out all the baselines and stuff. It looks like a whole turf again. So, it looked really good, and then now nobody's using it. If we have to expend some money with our own guys over time or something, I think it's worthy of doing, but I'm sure Mr. Pacheco sees the same thing when he drives up and down.
Absolutely. So, what we did do was we, we have two cost estimates, one for a natural field and one for artificial turf. A lot of the work that we would do, we would do for both fields, and then it gets a little more finite when we make the final decision. The total cost of renovating the baseball field with fencing, dugouts, backstop is about 1.8 million. That'll give you the artificial surface, about 1.4 million dollars would be a grass field. So, that, that work, those estimates are based on a lot of other schools, and the drainage work is based actually on Durfee's work. So, where we stand right now, as the superintendent said, the project is, we do have some contingency money currently available. However, we need to finish the, putting the skin on the fieldhouse, finishing that off, and any miscellaneous items that would come up between now and the end of the project. We could, as the superintendent said, get this into facilities, make a commitment as to where we want to go, whether we want to go synthetic or we want to go turf. My preference would be synthetic, and I think we would get a lot more use out of the field, and we could obviously get some money back on that field with rentals on the off-seasons. So, we are a little bit further along than we were the last time this came up. We do have a little more fine numbers. They are much more defined in what we need to do and how we want to approach this, but we do have a little bit of work ahead of us before we put a shovel in the ground.
Yeah, I would recommend that as soon as possible have the meeting. The other piece that concerns me is we currently have, we had two fields over there for baseball, and there's three teams at the high school. Now, we're going to have one on-site, and if there's any way through the facilities committee or through the building committee, there's other spots on that, on the grounds to create more than one field, it's sort of going backwards as far as I'm concerned. I, you probably agree, you just, I just think having that discussion ahead of time is going to be better than having it after the fact.
Yes.
When the whole place is done, and we got a crappy field there, so.
The hope is, is that we, we're going to look at the softball, the varsity softball field, see what we can do to combine opposite ends for JV and varsity, varsity softball, JV baseball on that field. And there's also, part of our objective was to make the practice football field a softball field, and all it would be was a movable mound. So, we seem to, we have seen that in other places, and it seems like it works very well. And that would give us two and two on baseball and softball. So, that's the ultimate plan. We did the tests on the two fields. That work is done. We've refurbished or rejuvenated both of the fields, the practice and football field. We don't have a lot of time on it. There was a lot of damage that was done on the field over the years, some rips, and a couple of areas where the, the ground underneath had collapsed. So, that's been taken care of. Fields right now are in the best shape they've been in in probably two, three, four years maybe, but that won't last.
Yeah, no, I appreciate it. Whatever you can do to look into it, you know it's important to me, and I'm sure it's important to the other members of the committee as well. Thank you.
Mr. Corey?
So, Ken, the field that's beyond the parking lot, is it off the Hemlock Street or, you know, off of Ray Street, that back field?
Yes.
Will that field stay intact?
So, that field is intact. That's not going to be touched. The issue is it needs work, so it needs drainage issues. It has drainage issues, so it needs to have some permanent solutions. Ideally, artificial turf on all our fields would give us the maximum use. We can, we can always schedule teams around the field if we can play on the field every day. The issue most of the time with baseball, softball, is the weather doesn't allow us to because the fields are too wet. The artificial surface, that doesn't come into play.
Okay, so, as far as the main field is concerned, that's all part of the blueprinted plan, right?
No.
Is it figured, it's not figured out on blueprint yet in the architectural design?
The only field that's part of the plan is the new field that's being built when the old Durfee is torn down. That's the only thing that's into the design work.
And that's going to be for baseball?
And that's going to be an all-purpose field.
An all-purpose field.
Right. That's the one that's up on the terrace.
Is there any other room to play around and create another field?
There's not a lot, there's not a lot of room there, which is why, again, if we can utilize, for instance, the outfield of the baseball, that could be field hockey, because if it's artificial, then it will be able to take the punishment, you know, over and over again. And then the other fields, again, we can, we can try and make them, you know, multi-sport as long as it's artificial. Grass fields are very difficult because of the usage. They need to rest, and we don't, obviously, our seasons are short, so they don't have a lot of opportunity to rest.
Thank you, I yield.
I have a different question, but if this is on the fields, I hope.
John, Capital?
I think Paul has a question on that.
Oh, I'm sorry, Paul.
That's okay, just a really quick one. Kenny, what is the status with the main football field, the turf-wise, maintenance-wise? Is it up for?
So, we're ready to go. We're ready to play on it.
Okay.
Both fields, the practice and that one. We probably have a year and a half, two years on those fields, and that'll be it.
And how much is the cost to replace that?
A little under a million bucks.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
My other question was on the one-to-one, the numbers you just stated.
Yes, but can I, may I ask the committee to refer this to subcommunities so I can put it on the planning wall, so we can have this conversation down the road?
Sounds good to me.
So, I'll just put it on the planning wall, we'll schedule a meeting.
Okay.
All right, go ahead.
So, the one-to-one, Mr. Hart was mentioning about the, if every student has devices at home and stuff, are we technically closer to one-to-one than, like, how close are we to having a one-to-one device in the whole district?
Forty computers. No, we're actually, we're above. So, right now is I just, we have 10,000.
Well, you said some kids are using their own, or there's like-
Some are.
Bring your own device thing, but get rid of that?
We've allowed that. Huh? We've allowed that.
The goal is to get rid of them using their own device and use our devices?
Yeah, the, yes, the goal, well, the goal is to make sure that no one will go without a device. If a family wants to use their own, we can allow that, and our policy that we approved allows for that. But we're, we're, we want to be a place that we could have just imagined, no one has a device, we would have one for every kid.
Right, so if by chance, you know, the virus gets worse or whatever, and we have to go full remote, we have enough computers now, so everyone has one.
I'm good to go.
And they can connect.
Yes.
Thank you. The, my last question on that was, if the students that are in the cohort that's currently full remote.
Yeah.
What does a typical day look like for those students? Is it from school day?
Let me get through, if you let me get through the next part of the report, we're going to answer that.
Perfect, thank you, I yield.
Go ahead, Mr. Paul.
Okay, I'll be quick. Everyone has a document in front that looks like this. Thank the, Mayor Coogan has made sure that I had this here today, and I, we worked on it to be able to have this for you today. This is, these are numbers that we're giving you right now as of today. So, as of today, we have 10,068 students. Hold that figure in your head for a second because we're going to come back to it. Of those students, and don't look at present because that's an attendance figure, look over to the right. Cohort A, we have 1,260 students enrolled in education, these are substantially separate students, and Foundation L students who are in school eight out of 10 days. Cohort B, fully remote, now this is the figure that, that we were off by about 1,000 students, is 4,387 students. Those are students and families who picked full remote. So, when we divide up cohort C and D, you can see cohort C is about, is 2,259 students, and D is 2,162. So, when you add the two together, cohort A plus cohort C, you can see that we have roughly 34, 3500 students in school on a daily basis. So, that's the figure that we've been using. So, that is every day, Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday, there's about 3,500 students in school.
Hey, Dr. Malone.
Yeah.
Can I just ask a clarifying question? My understanding was A was our Foundation Ls and sped self-contained, and then I thought D was full remote, and B and C were hybrid.
No, B is full remote, and C and D are the ones that are split in two.
Thank you.
So, so this document that I'm giving you is for your use. You can turn the page, and you can see by school how many students we have in each cohort and what their attendance has been. Now, this attendance on the first page is not accurate, so you see those percentages, 83, 89, 84. It's because we're, the state has allowed us a lag. So, for example, some students are completing their work later in the days, particularly high school students. That gets caught up the following day, so our attendance figures are more accurate on the pages that follow where you see us in the 90s. So, the state is, that's a change this year that the state has made. Now, the most important part of this document is the last page, and the last page shows you our current numbers compared to last one, last year's October 1 numbers. Now, this is, it's shocking, but it's not, take your breath away, shocking, but it will have its impact. And you can see the numbers in pre-K and K. What the difference is, we're seeing this across the Commonwealth, and the superintendents are working with the commissioner, this is a major issue. Now, you know that compulsory ed doesn't start till six years old, so because of the fact that we don't mandate kindergarten as compulsory attendance, parents don't have to sign their children up. Many parents kept their kids home, but that is a problem at kindergarten for us around our October 1 number for school funding. There will be an impact with that. So, we get about $11,000 per kid. You can imagine what the impact will be at kindergarten. We get half that at pre-K. Now, what's also interesting is you can see where there are numbers that have increased. So, you can see eighth grade is larger, although ninth grade's small, 10th grade's larger. We're down about 228 kids. So, if you do the math on that, you know, we're close to $3 million projected decrease in Chapter 70 if the state doesn't do anything with the, with the hold harmless provision from the prior year. That's something that we don't know yet. But this is the reality of where we are with our numbers. Now, granted, these numbers will go up across the course of the year, but what is troubling for us, of course, is that when they're captured on October 1. So, that report will be due to the department, I believe it's next week, and we'll get that uploaded, but that will set up us for the following year, FY '22. So, where we're seeing a challenge is at the kindergarten level, which, which is something that concerns everyone across the Commonwealth and the, I know that the Association of Superintendents right now, I got a completed survey tomorrow, we'll work with Dr. Curly on, to make sure that they have our, they're putting an argument together to raise with the, with both the department and the legislature about what this is, what this means for systems. Now, granted, even though you lose kids, we're still operating the system at the same size, given the way we've scheduled, so capacity, of course, doesn't decrease with a decrease in students such as this. Now, I think there's good and bad within these numbers in terms of, it's not 500, it's not 600, but it's still 228 students. And you can see over the last several years, we've grown as a district, which is always good. I said this to you before, with Chapter 70, growth is good because you're always guaranteed more money for the numbers of kids. So, as we've grown the last several years, that's helped us with our budgets. If we decrease, that will hurt us. Now, granted with the Student Opportunity Act being phased in next year, I think we'll be able to offset some of this, but it's still great unknowns, and I wanted to raise this for you today. But really, coupled with this conversation is also the work that we're doing around cohort B students. You know, originally when we went out and said, who want to be cohort B, make the decision now, you can't come back until January, but we're having some troubles with scheduling numbers, and so we're looking in a very limited basis based on priority, on individual cases, looking at bringing students back from cohort B. So, we've begun those discussions at the school site level based on a criteria of high-risk, high-risk or high-need students, students that are special ed, students that are second language learners, students that are McKenney-Vento, and then students that are DHS or DPH, DHS involved. And I've articulated that in a memo which you all have, I've shared that memo, I know it's been shared across the field, but we think it's the right thing to do, we're going down this path. Now, I have to say this to you with the caveat, that at the same time that we're talking about bringing students back, maintaining six-foot distance, not messing with that distance, we're also seeing an uptick in positive cases. So, as we, as of right now, currently, there are 12 adults in the system- So as we, as of right now, currently, there are 12 adults in the system that have, that have tested positive, that are out in quarantine, and there has been one student that is an in-district student, meaning is part of our hybrid cohort. So that shows over the last several weeks, an increase from where we were. We've been in the red last week is the first week. We'll wait to see the figures for this coming week, which were released on Wednesday. And as we, as you know, we're looking at an average of three to four weeks across the district before coming back for more discussion. So I know that the mayor's office and the Department of Public Health and our own nursing department are very close in contact, looking at where we have some hotspots in terms of spread rates. But as the testing goes up and more come in, those rates, you know, we were at 8.5, or 8.6 this past Wednesday, and our four-week average was 7.366, or 7.36. So I raise that as, as an issue. Of course, it's just one indicator, but this is the reality of, of where we are and what we're doing. So we're proceeding to move forward as planned, but at the same time, monitoring and making sure that we're doing so safely and thoughtfully. If there are any questions, I'll gladly answer them.
Amy?
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. The minus 134 for kindergarten, Dr. Malone, how, how does that number compare to, let's say, 2018?
So we're averaging around 855, 860 kindergarten kids. That's about the average. And we, you know, we've been pretty, we've been growing each year, but that's, that's about where we are. You can see always, there's been some bubbles, like, look at the current fourth and fifth grades are above 900. That's where we'd like to be, but those, those numbers have decreased. It shows us being, you know, the projections from the NESDEC show us being flat over the next couple of years at a figure around 800 and, no, 850, 860.
Okay, thank, I have another one, another question, thank you. As far as Cohort B, in that we know they're all remote, I just have a question on virtual present, absent, and virtually absent. If, how are you monitoring and getting these numbers? For instance, a virtual absent at 409, how does it differ from an absent at 308? If all students are remote?
I'm gonna have Marie answer that question, or Tracy? Yeah. You can just sit here, go ahead.
So right now, the way the attendance is, is being recorded, there are, the virtually absent and virtually, and virtually present and things like that are all being converted partway through the school day. So I think we're in Cohort B, where you're seeing some students that are present and some are virtually present. It's because the teachers are inputting it manually as present, and then on the back end, we're converting them to virtually present. And so if some of these are still reading present, it's just because when I ran the report, some of the conversions at some of the schools just haven't been made yet.
Okay, I understand. So what you're saying is this virtual absent and absent are collectively one figure? It's just how it's being inputted? So we're about 700 absent students remotely, correct?
For, are we looking at the?
For Cohort B.
Cohort B.
It says absent 308.
Yes, the 308 and the 409.
Right.
So those eventually all get converted to virtually absent. There are some outliers that I noticed in terms of, in Cohort A, you wouldn't really have a student, generally speaking, virtually present or they were absent, they'd actually be present or absent, so there's a question there. That could be because we might have some students who are completing work from home, they're, they get marked virtually present, but we have to make some adjustment there.
Okay. My next question, just, for instance, if a, if a parent keeps their child home experiencing minor, you know, symptoms, and they wanna play it safe, and they're, they're a hybrid student, they're supposed to be in school in their, on that week, they're supposed to be in person, but they don't go to school, but they complete all their assigned work, does that constitute an absence?
So I think that locally, we can, we can count that as the student being present, but when we do our reporting to the Department of Ed, they, they are looking for students physically in the building. So it's, it's the same thing, like, there are some things where locally, we might excuse an absence for a student, but the state doesn't recognize those excused absences. It's the same thing here. So they, they need an actual count of who's in the building and who isn't. So we are not really at liberty for the official records to mark a student present, just because they've done, if they're on record with the department as being a student who is fully remote, or in a fully remote week, they are, they, we can mark them virtually present or absent. But if they are a student who's supposed to be in school on any particular week, or every single week, we have to mark them absent if they're not in school. That's why there is a question in terms of cleaning up some of this stuff, where we see some, on this report, in Cohort A and Cohort D, we had nine students who should've been in school, who were marked virtually present. So there's a question about that, and that's something that we have to clean up. So this was just today's data before the cleanup.
I just, I just think that would be a little concerning to parents to see, to be making the right decision, the decision that we want these parents to make, to keep everybody, the grade of good, and to see absent and completing their work, I think would be a little concerning to parents. So if that's something that maybe, is that how it's gonna be marked?
Well, I, I think that in terms of reporting to the state, there's not a choice there. But the students definitely get credit for the work that they're doing. The same thing happens on, like, on the other side of it, where we might have students that we mark present, because they show up for morning attendance, they're participating in morning meeting, and then they don't do work for the rest of the day.
Okay.
That's equivalent to a student showing up in school and putting their head down. They're present, but they can't get credit for any of the work. So we are, we have to examine it really from both ends.
So is it a child-by-child basis, or?
Well, I, I mean, for state.
School by school, like, what?
For state reporting, we have to mark a student absent if they're not, if they are supposed to be physically in the building, and they're not here that week, we have to mark them absent.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Kevin?
Ayil, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
So just a couple of questions. The, the kids coming, or actually, just about this report, was this just for today, or is this, do we do this one every day?
No, but this is just for today.
So if I ask you for last Fridays, we don't have?
We don't have this for last Friday. I just put this together in the last 48 hours, in terms of like, putting this together, but this is something we're gonna now be able to create and spit out at some point, using our system.
So last week, how was it being reported? Is it, what is the task? Is it by school, like?
It's been reported the same way. Are you talking about to the state?
No, to, for us, for our internal purposes of, it just struck me as we're talking about this, and it's, the data's gotta get cleaned up. It begs the question then, why are we getting it with data that's not cleaned up already?
Well, this is actually today's data. So I told you before, we had a lag, a lag behind of a week, of a, of a day.
No, but what I'm saying is, Dr. Curly just mentioned that they still have to look at it and figure out, like, some things within the data.
Right.
That begs the question of, what was the data last week, if it was being reported out or not reported out? Is it just by school?
Well, go to, go turn the page, and you can see October 15th, which is last Thursday. And you can see that that's cleaned up data, that's the actual figures.
By the school?
Yeah, by school.
So this is sort of an attempt at summarizing?
Yes.
You know? I would like to just see maybe weekly by school, something like that, where, where you charge the school with just giving us a report.
Yeah, but we've never given you this report in the first place, this is brand new.
I know. What I'm saying, moving forward, I think it would make sense for each school to give an update once a week, maybe with your Friday memo, to say, here's how our week went.
It doesn't work like that, Kevin. This is all state-reported data that we control centrally. So it all gets reported, so I run reports by the district. So we take the school's reports, they get funneled up, and they get uploaded every single day to the department.
Right. So you're telling me that the, each individual school does not have a handle on, I have 600 kids in my school day, 300 of this, 200 of that, this is how many are present. You're telling me the principals don't do that information?
I'm telling you that we do have that.
Right, and all I'm asking is they send us a copy of it once a week.
I don't know about that, Kevin. I've never sent you guys attendance reports in five years.
All right, so we're just a school committee, we don't need to get information.
Why do you need that?
Why would we need it? So we don't have questions like this at a meeting that we meet once a month.
Five years, I haven't given you that report, Kevin. I mean, I can start doing it, that's fine, but I haven't given you that report once in five years. Would you like a weekly report of attendance?
Are we in a different situation than we've been in? Everyone on this committee has questions about Cohort A, Cohort B, Cohort C.
I get daily, I get daily reports. Do you want my daily report?
I want you to give this committee whatever you think we need, so that we don't have all these questions.
Well, you're gonna have questions, Kevin, 'cause I give you reports, 'cause you're not gonna be able to figure out what I give you. Very complicated, but I can give you everything that I get, which is I get daily reports.
I can read through it, don't worry. The, we're moving, you wanna move kids from the Cohort B full remote back. Where did that come from? Is that district, where did that originate? Was it from the district or from the schools? Like, the schools, were the schools saying, "I have little Johnny that needs more support"?
First, it came from the state. The Department of Education has asked us to look at our numbers and try to make sure that we're servicing as many kids as we possibly can, given the confines that we did our reopening with. Our numbers, those students who, you know, our projections, when we originally put our plan together at six foot, we're about 1,000 students off. We had more families pick fully remote. Our original plan says if you pick fully remote, you're gonna stay fully remote up through January 19th, half the year.
Yep.
Based on what the numbers look like in actuality, our sites have been struggling with trying to figure out the scheduling of kids. And we looked at, parents were starting to say, "My kid wants to come back." While other parents were saying, "Now I want my kid to go full remote." So we were contemplating, what, if we were gonna bring some kids back and meet our six-foot distancing and all those criteria, and we can fit them in class, who would the kids be? So then we worked with the principals and the central office team to figure out what a priority would be. So we prioritized, as we just articulated, to say, what do we have out there for families? Do we have some kids that can come back? So that's where it came from.
Right, so I'll speak for myself. When we, we're trying to figure this out for the whole school year, so in my mind, when we had a policy that said, if you choose full remote, you're gonna stay full remote until the semester, was so that we're not trying to figure out moving kids in and out, and letting schools get a handle of what they currently have. Now we're not even, basically almost a month in, and we're already starting to move kids. I can't imagine that that's not gonna be a complicated.
Kevin, this is a dynamic plan. Nothing is perfect. We did, we, we underforecast how many kids would be in full remote. I have space to serve more kids. If we have needy kids that need to be in face-to-face school, we want them to come back.
Right, and yet, but you're also in the same breath saying that those parents chose to keep them full remote.
Kevin, a lot of families made decisions not knowing the full context. Now the full context is known. It's been safe to come to school, families are seeing that. So we have parents that are saying, "Can we get my kids back in?" We're trying to do the right thing by serving needy kids. We have too many kids that need to be face-to-face, that are at home on full remote. If we could bring some back, that's what we're trying to do.
Right, so when they say that the parents wanna come in, so a parent requests, "I'd like to have my kid come back," take a look at it. But it sounds like as if we're asking and we're encouraging people to come back. That's the part that I'm having trouble with.
Well, I don't know why you have any problem with that, because if you read my memo, it says we have a criteria for families that have asked to come back. School leaders are starting to make lists of who they have, they're talking with parents that have been talking to them, and then over a brief period of time, we'll be able to bring some of these kids back. We're only talking, you know, a couple hundred kids. That's all we're gonna be able to do before we run out of space.
So when you were 1,000 kids off, what are the staff doing that are 1,000 kids off, and now they're assigned to the remote, fully remote?
Staff are working fully remote and in-person.
So we're, if you take all of the staff and divide them up by the students, now they're working full remote?
It doesn't work that simple. We've got four schedules we're running at once, and it's very, very complicated and challenging for our staff to meet the numbers of the fully remote in the model that we're using, which is essentially full teaching with those students. So by getting some students back into, and you can see the numbers, you can see how many kids are in certain grades, back into face-to-face in one of the hybrid models, that will help us in our coverage, delivery of instruction for our remote students.
So what's the average class size of a fully remote student, teacher?
It varies, almost 30-something.
But if they were in class, they'd have less?
Right now, I have some classes that are running seven kids, and, you know, I can bring back another seven. And that will help those other teachers. So bringing students back helps us in our delivery, and it also helps us in our, our labor agreements, helps us in all sorts of ways.
Yeah, I just, I'm concerned about it, but the last question is that, fully remote students, what does their day look like?
Well, it looks different for elementary and for secondary, but the kids, elementary, they start their day with morning meeting with their teacher, then, or advisory, secondary for middle school. There are many lessons that teachers deliver, and teachers will give them some work that they can do independently. Teacher might be doing small group with some students, but they're checking in, and then they'll bring them back. But they're getting their assignments from their teachers, getting a mini lesson, and then getting their independent work.
So if a school runs from 8:00 to 2:30 hypothetically, what are, what are the hours of the remote learning?
They're getting, remote learning is flexible, right? Because parents chose it for the flexibility, especially for the younger students. But they're expected to get the same amount of work as if they were completing a full day's, a full day of school. But they're, they may be completing it at different times.
So they don't necessarily get six and a half hours of timed?
No, they're getting the six and a half hours' worth of work, just like if they were in school, but they have the flexibility to complete it. So if I'm a parent of a kindergarten student, and I have to work, and my child stays with their grandmother, who doesn't speak English, et cetera, we do have some of those cases. So the parent, the, the child might log in for morning meeting, and then the parent might have the students sit with them when they get home from work, et cetera, to complete the work. So there's, there is flexibility with the remote learning, that's, some parents chose that for that flexibility.
So if I'm a teacher, then what do I do?
Well, not all, no, no. Teachers are, there are kids that are reporting at the time. Believe me, everybody is maxed out, all teachers are maxed out.
I'm not suggesting that they're not.
No, no.
I'm just saying, what do they do from eight, so at 8 o'clock is morning meeting, then you do your lessons?
They're assigned.
You do your mini lessons, so usually at the end of every day, you wrap it up with a closing whatever, and, you know, plan for the next day. That happens at the same time as the school day would normally be?
Yes, yes, they're, the teachers work their regular typical day hours. They're working with a different number of students. So you might have some students who are not logging in for that particular mini lesson. There, there are videos or live instruction that's happening with the teacher, and then teachers are doing self-directed, independent work. But teachers have kids in front of them, or they're working with small group. But they're, teachers are working their typical day.
Is there, are all of those students with a teacher?
Not at all.
A licensed teacher getting paid?
The teacher is, has various groups of students at different times of the day.
But it's a teacher, like, a licensed teacher is responsible for the?
It's a public school's teacher, or in some instances, it all depends on the situation. We might have a substitute in there if the, if the person is out. But it's our teachers, our staff. We repurposed our staff and spread them out between the four plans.
I'm saying, the person responsible for a group of students is a teacher?
Yes.
The, I've heard stories of 11 o'clock day ending and being done for the day.
That's not true.
Yeah, so those wouldn't?
That, I, I would, I would say.
No, I'm not saying the teacher, I'm talking about the child, like, if they say they're done for the day, is that?
Yeah, I, we, we, we get some parents who say, "Oh, my child only had an hour's worth of work." And then we say, "Okay, let's check, let's go in and check with that work." That's not true, a student can say, just like if they're in school, they can say, "Oh, I'm done," and be done in 10 minutes. Kids finish at different paces. But kids are not getting two hours' worth of work, and then they're done for the day. If they are, parents have been really good about contacting us, and then we figure out what's going on. But everyone should get the equivalent amount of time worth of work that they're in school.
Right, okay, thank you, Ayil.
Okay, I'm sorry. Any other questions?
Okay, I'm sorry. Any else with a question?
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, I just wanted to, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to make a quick comment about, to my colleague's point with respect to the numbers and bringing students back from remote. I think what's happening is that because there are a number of students, more than we anticipated, remote, those caseloads for teachers are higher than those for teachers that are actually doing the hybrid. So by bringing some of those students who want to and are able to come back in in a hybrid model, it balances the caseload, the teaching caseload. So if you're a teacher and you're remote, and you've got it, I don't wanna say a thousand additional kids, but your caseload's higher, so you're responsible for more planning, more grading, et cetera, et cetera. Whereas if you're a hybrid teacher and you're in class, your numbers may be lower than someone who's teaching remote. So I, I think if we can safely bring students from remote back into the classrooms into Cohort C and D, and balance that a little more, that obviously works well for teachers that are trying to, you know, manage the number of students that they're responsible for, educating and grading and assessing and et cetera, et cetera. So, um, my only concern would be whether or not we have the physical space to do that safely. If we don't, then I would say we need to pump the brakes and take a closer look at that. And I would also urge Superintendent, if that's going to happen, and again, it obviously needs to be worked out with our, with our unions, but if that's gonna be, happen, that that be communicated well and it be done, um, so that we're not flooding, if you will, for lack of a better term, flooding those classrooms or those hybrid cohorts with students from remote, where it's difficult for those teachers who are in that situation to sort of absorb those students sort of midstream. So I think it can be done. It needs to be done with a lot of communication. It needs to be done tactfully. But if we have parents who are seeking their students to go hybrid, and we have that physical space, and there are student needs out there that we're not addressing fully remote, then we need to get those students before, um, our teachers, at least in the hybrid model, in my opinion. But I think it needs a lot of communication. I think it needs a lot of discussion about how to roll that out, and it needs to be done strategically and slowly so that teachers don't feel overwhelmed that all of a sudden they look at their roles, and now they get an additional forty, fifty, sixty students that are coming off remote in their, in their classrooms and in their schedule. So as long as it's done with those parameters in place, I, I think it's, it's better if, if people are interested in having their students in a hybrid model, and they're comfortable with it, and we can physically do it, then I for one feel as, as though we should. With that, I yield, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Just wanted to comment on that. The, um, the other reason why I'm hesitant to stop to bring people back is I think we, we can't be blind to the fact that the cases are going up, and we're, we've been in the red zone and, and all that. So we potentially could be bringing kids back to then therefore making a decision later to, to go full remote for everyone. And I think that's gonna be cause for another, like, switch. So I came from the, the idea that if parents chose remote and there's forty-three hundred kids there, that we give them the best remote that we can within that, and we shift our staff accordingly. This is a little different than what, that was a month ago. And I just see the cases going up, and I think, I think we're gonna shift, and then we're gonna have to shift again. And I think that's a concern. But I'd like to just ask the Superintendent, if you could get us, you said there's some classes with seven? Can we get a listing of class sizes across each school?
Do you have any report I gave you today?
Well, then we gotta divide it, how many units they have. I don't need it today. I'm just saying if at some point you can send us a list of the class sizes by school, I'd appreciate it. Thank you, I yield.
Anything further on the superintendent's report? At this time, um, a friend of the Fall Republic Schools, former superintendent, um, Rick Pavo passed away unexpectedly last week. I'd ask everybody to please rise for a moment of silence. Rick was our former superintendent, and he, many of us on the committee now and have worked with him, and then, uh, we wish his family nothing but the best. Next student comment. Do we have a report?
There is no one.
Okay, so then we'll move item number six, approval of the minutes. The first is an evaluation subcommittee meeting from nine fourteen. Um, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
This is a point of order. I don't know if you wanna just read them all, Mr. Chair, and take one vote or?
Can you do them all at once? Can you do them all at once?
See why not?
If it's legal.
Huh?
Is it legal to do it that way?
Bruce?
Yes, you why not?
All right, let's go with them all at once. Good idea. First one is nine fourteen, the Evaluation Subcommittee, Approval of the Minutes. The next meeting is, um, what's the second one? I'm sorry, guys.
School Committee Goal Setting, nine fourteen.
I don't have it on this one here. What's the next one, Mark?
The next one is the minutes for the meeting of the School Committee Goal Setting for nine fourteen twenty.
The next one is the Approval of the Regular School Committee from nine fourteen. Six point four is the Special Meeting of the School Committee from nine twenty-three. Six point five is the Special Education, Alternative Education, Early College Subcommittee Meeting from nine twenty-eight. The six-six is the Approval of the Policy Subcommittee, um, Meeting Minutes. I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion on the minutes? Deb, please call the roll.
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Har?
Yes.
Mr. Hetzel?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Ms. Larevy?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. Next is item seven, Approval of Travel Request.
Motion approved.
There are no travel requests tonight. Thank you for approving it, Dr. Hart.
You're very welcome, Dr. Coogan.
Item eight is the Acceptance of Donations.
Motion to accept the donations.
Has the motion to accept? Do I have a second?
Second.
Second. Um, any discussion on the donations?
Dr. Malone, read them for the record, please.
Yes. Well, you're gonna go talk first, or?
Yeah, if you could just read them for the record, Mr. Chair.
Yeah, Dr. Malone, would you read the, uh, donations first, please?
From Durfee Hilltop Athletic Foundation to Durfee High School Athletics, four thousand, four hundred and forty-four dollars. From Woodwind Brass Wind to the Fine and Performing Arts, four hundred and ninety dollars and eleven cents. From Donors Choose, Johnson and Johnson and Spencer Boardman Elementary School, four hundred and fifty doll, four hundred and fifty dollars and ninety-three cents. From Home Depot of Somerset, Mass. to Resiliency Prep Academy, ten window box fans. From Lowes of Dartmouth, Mass. to Resiliency Prep Academy, ten window box fans. From South Coast Health Systems, Inc. to Fall Republic Schools, hand sanitizers. From Mass in Motion to Resiliency Prep Academy, ten bicycle helmets. From Donors Choose to Fonsica Elementary School Classroom Materials, including sensory and writing materials. We thank our donors for their philanthropic support.
Any questions on the donations? I have a motion and a second. Deb, please call the roll.
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Har?
Yes.
Mr. Hetzel?
He said yes.
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Ms. Larevy?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. Item nine is the Approval of Contracts. We have a number of them tonight.
Motion to approve. Seconded.
I have a motion, a second. Anybody have any questions on contracts? Mr. Corey?
Yeah, I'd just like to, uh, find out, um, as far as the Somerset Glass Contract is concerned. Was there anybody, um, did we have to go out of the city to get that contract because of their specialty? Or, or is there somebody in the city that we could've had?
There were, uh, three bidders, um, two from the city and, and that one from Somerset. Somerset was the low bidder, which is what we're looking for, but the, um, the other contractors have also had other work. So, um, both Somerset and Collins Construction have done quite a bit of the, uh, of the glasswork. And are subcontracting off of each other, you know, probably fifty percent of the time on different projects for us.
Sure. I, I ask that question in the spirit of whenever, whenever we can keep it, you know, within our city, you know, that just helps us a little bit more. So, thank you for the explanation. With that, I yield.
Any further discussion? Deb, please call the roll.
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Har?
Yes.
Mr. Hetzel?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Ms. Larevy?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. Item number ten is the Approval of Grants. We have a number of them.
Question on number one?
All right, so you wanna hold number one for Kevin? How about the rest of them? Can I get a motion and a second?
Motion to approve. Seconded.
Why don't we call the roll on that and go back to item one for, uh, Mr. Agia? Deb, please.
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Har?
Yes.
Mr. Hetzel?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Ms. Larevy?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. Uh, Mr. Agia, please.
Just had a question on the, uh, either the amount of money, uh, when it can be, it has to be used by, what are the specifications of it?
So the grant, the grant runs from July first through December thirtieth. It was part, it was the two hundred and twenty-five dollars that the, the state allocated to, the two hundred and twenty-five dollars per student that the state allocated to all districts. Uh, it's, it was intended to help districts with reopening and all that kind of stuff. At this point, most of the money is already committed. We, um, we've already set aside the money for the Pearson-Connectus program to be paid through here, uh, some PPE that we put through to be paid through here and other things. But it's, for the most part, it's already committed. It was a, so the way this grant was intended was they, it was essentially like a reimbursement kind of grant. So they wanted us to spend it, spend it upfront to get reimbursed because of, because of like the timing of it. It was a late, like, add-on, add-on to us.
Yep. So how much were we able then to, uh, pay out of this, things that we would've paid out of something else? And now we have a surplus in other parts of our budget?
Maybe a couple hundred thousand dollars, because the Pearson, that, you know, the, the online program was not something that we originally had put in, put into the budget, uh, and things like that.
But I thought that that came, I could be wrong, or this may be after the, like, the way that some things run, but I thought that we had committed that... Are you talking about like the, uh, curriculum that we, we bought from?
No, no, no. It's...
That we had a meeting and we talked about?
It's the, it's the Pearson online platform that we purchased for the elementary schools. That, that platform was one point one million dollars, and it was not something that we had initially, we initially had in the budget or budgeted for.
But when did that come before us?
That, that platform? Back in August.
Before we even knew we had this money?
Yes. I knew, we knew we had this money.
Just accepting it.
And, and it's, all, all we're doing is accepting it at this point. And the re, and the reason being is because this, this grant here, it, they gave it, I hate to say they gave it to us late, but the state, the state said, "Districts, you have this money, this is yours. You have until such and such a date to submit the grant. The grant period runs from X state to X state." And so it ends December thirty-first, but districts could prepay or pre-purchase, uh, stuff to put towards this grant.
Right, so you're saying we already had that discussion. It just seems that this is, this is not a new grant.
No, 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 no.
It just appears like it is now, it's not two point three million in new money.
No.
This, we knew about, we spent it, we talked about it before.
Correct. This is, this is just, you, you formally accepting the grant, so we...
Wasn't there a grant that we talked about when we were going back and forth about how much money we had, and we were gonna pay for the, um, a million dollars for transportation, that there was two point three more million coming?
Yes.
When is that coming? Where is that?
It, so the ESA grant, we have it, we have it for the duration of this year, and it's, it's actually a multi-year grant. So we have the ability, if need be, to carry, carry the money forward.
It just happens to be around the same amount of money?
No, that, that ESA grant started at four point seven million dollars. We've committed money out of the grant. At the, right now, it's just over two million dollars that we have not committed.
I'm talking about the CARES Act money, that's what we're...
Yes, yes. The, the ESA fund, the elementary...
Separate from that money. We told at a meeting that we had an additional two million dollars coming from somewhere? Where is it?
That's the, that's the two twenty-five per pupil money that he had never put in.
No, no, separate from this. So let's say we were back in August or July, we committed this money that we knew was spent. We also were told when we were trying to figure out the million bucks for the city, that we had another two million dollars that's not committed yet. That was only last month when we met.
Yeah, but that, so, so that, that's in reference to the CARES money, because we haven't committed that money. It's just, it's sitting aside in ob, it's, it's in the grant and obeyance. We have not committed that money yet.
Right. So my recollection was that separate from the two million we have in obeyance for the CARES money, we were told from this podium that we had two more million dollars that isn't even talked about yet. When we were making the argument that we're flush with money and that we need to help the city, we were told from that podium or there that we had the CARES money and an additional two million dollars that hasn't even, we've been allotted, it hasn't even come yet. This, we're saying, this is already money that we spent. So I wouldn't have considered that when we were talking about whether we had the extra money. That's all.
Okay.
I could be wrong, but bottom line is we don't have another two million coming. This is already spent, and...
This, this is, this is spent as of December thirty-first.
And you have a couple hundred thousand left potentially that you're gonna try to do something with it so we can be at money. With that, I yield. Thank you.
Just a question on Pearson, the, the, that content, I guess. Did we know that we were going to, at some point, start Pearson and start using that curriculum?
Yes.
Yes. I, it's just come to my attention that there are kids just now starting on Pearson. Is that because it took so long to get it?
No, that actually was because they were integrating it, migrating it with our ASN, and it took longer for the, the two systems to each other. So that took a couple weeks longer than what it should.
Right. Did our teachers, uh, I guess, get the training that they needed for Pearson, and it's up and running successfully? Okay, thank you. I yield.
Okay, anything further on the one grant left, Coronavirus Relief Fund? I'll take a motion in a second to approve that.
So moved. Second.
Deb, please call the roll.
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Har?
Yes.
Mr. Hetzel?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Ms. Larevy?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. Committee of the whole, uh, Presentation and Discussion for our Public Schools Accountability and School Turnaround Update is presented by Dr. Tracy Curley, Director of Data Accountability, Research and Assessment.
Hello. So I think everybody has, um, an updated version of the 2020 Accountability Categorization of the Fall Republic Schools. There was one in the binder, and I gave an updated copy tonight that actually has some information on the back as well. My goal for tonight is really just to take, um, a few minutes to offer an update on the accountability status of all of our schools, and then to talk a little bit specifically about Fonsica and Watson, which are our two schools that are identified as underperforming at this point. So we know that, um, beginning in 2018, we were looking at a new accountability system, and it's one that really focuses on our, um, it focuses on all students and our lowest-performing students, and gives equal weight to the performance of those two groups of students. In the new system, um, the schools are categorized primarily based on, um, the extent to which they're making progress toward targets. And then for schools that are in the lowest tenth percentile, they're categorized a little bit differently. They're categorized based on that fact that they are in the lowest ten percent. So in 2018, um, we did a presentation. It was based on one year of data. In 2019, we did a similar presentation and showed how the schools were then being categorized based on two years of data. What you have in front of you in terms of this, um, 2020 Accountability categorization is really, um, pretty much repeat information from 2019. There was no 2020, um, accountability data without MCAS. So all of the schools were in kind of a stay-put in terms of their 2019 accountability status. I'll do a quick review here of the schools along the continuum, and then, as I said, talk a little bit more about Fonsica and Watson and where they stand. So on the left side of this, um, continuum, we see all of our schools, there are seven of them, that are characterized in terms of accountability. They're characterized just based on the percentage of the target points that they earn. So schools are given targets every year in terms of achievement and attendance and growth, um, chronic absenteeism, dropout rates and things like that for high school, and they're, so they're given very specific targets, and then they're awarded points in terms of the extent to which they meet the targets. So if you look along the continuum, all the way to the left, we have Doran, Meeting or Exceeding Targets. They were our one school, um, in 2019, and again, using two years of data, that was meeting or exceeding targets. Eighty-seven percent of the target points were earned, and they landed themselves in the thirty-first percentile. We then have a bucket of schools, four schools that didn't meet targets, but the state identifies them as schools that are making substantial progress toward their targets. And within that group of schools, there's a wide range of percentiles. You can see for Varis in the sixteenth percentile, all the way up to Sp... all the way up to Spence Aborden in the 52nd percentile. And that is all related to the extent to which, um, you know, how they're performing against other schools. The target points, though, that becomes the major focus because that's how the schools, um, in, in this particular category are really being, um, kind of ranked. We are really focused on the fact that they're not in the lowest 10% and we want to look at how much progress they're actually making. The next set of, um, schools are in yellow. That's Cuss and Sylvia. Both of those schools were identified as making moderate progress toward their targets and you can see, again, a little bit of a range there. Cuss in the 14th percentile, Sylvia in the 38th percentile. So, those were all of our schools that the state is telling us, like, they're not in need of any particular assistance. They need to keep doing what they're doing, keep making, um, at least as much progress as they're making right now so that they can show progress, um, over the, you know, over the coming years. On the right-hand side, um, we have, we show the schools and they're boxed, um, in red there. Those are the schools that the state is telling us requires assistance or intervention. And that's kind of an automatic bucket. If you're in the lowest 10th percentile, you're automatically in red there and you're identified as either needing focused targeted support or broad comprehensive. For the schools that are in focused targeted support, um, and we have five of them, those are the schools that we see writing annual plans, sustainable improvement plans. These are schools that are, um, they all went through a year of planning, just specific to writing plans, and now they're all in the implementation phase of those plans. They're writing, uh, they're writing plans that are focused on turnaround practices. They're setting measurable annual goals for their schools and then they're doing regular check-ins in terms of interim benchmarks. Two other schools, Fonska and Watson, who are also in the category of requiring assistance or intervention, they're categorized a little bit differently, broad comprehensive support. These are two schools that were our level four schools, underperforming schools prior to the new accountability system. And we've struggled, um, in the past couple of years, just in terms of the, um, what the outcomes looked like for Watson. Because Watson is a school, if you take a look, um, on the back of the page, Watson is a school that was categorized as level four in 2013. And in 2017, that was the, the first year that they were eligible to come out. But in 2017, we got a new assessment system and no schools actually came out of turnaround that year. So, every school in the, in the Commonwealth was held harmless in terms of their data. There were no percentiles, there were no rankings or anything like that. But as a result, Watson kind of got put in a holding pattern that year. So, we were really looking forward to the 2018 data and then the following years in terms of their being exited from turnaround status. Unfortunately, in 2018, with the new system, Watson, um, was in the sixth percentile. And in the sixth percentile, under the new system, they were automatically put in that category of requiring assistance or intervention. And at that time, the commissioner did not take them out of that subcategory of broad or comprehensive support. So, um, we looked again in 2019 and what we see in 2019, they're, they remain in the sixth percentile. So, they haven't been released from their status yet and, um, what our understanding is that there really isn't, in the coming years, there isn't any school who's going to be released from that status. Um, the previous level four, underperforming, now requiring assistance or intervention, broad comprehensive support. Nobody's gonna be released from that status until they can show that they're on a path to a sustained trajectory that takes them out of the lowest 10%. So, what we're, what we really need to see from Watson, once our accountability system gets back online, is that we need to see them out of the lowest 10% and remaining there for at least a couple of years before they would be considered for, um, a categorical change, really. If we take a look at, um, Fonska, Fonska, in some ways, finds themselves in the same kind of situation that Watson did, in that 2020 was their year to be considered for exit. They're in a little bit of a different situation because Watson had actually looked like they were on a trajectory to get out. They had moved into like the 11th percentile in 2016 and we were waiting for 2017 and there was, you know, that data wasn't available. Watson's a little bit different because they were categorized, um, as level four in 2016, 2017, no data. In 18 and 19, they're in the fourth percentile. So, even if there had been 2020 data and even if they had made really substantial moves out of that lowest 10%, 2020 wasn't gonna be the year, um, for Fonska to move out of lowest 10, out of that categorization as, um, love, previous level four and now that broad comprehensive support. Because again, the state is looking for multiple years out of the lowest 10% and on a trajectory that ensures that they're going to stay out because they're making sustainable improvement over time. So, um, for all of the schools that are, um, in that category of requiring assistance or intervention, uh, all of those schools have actually already submitted their turnaround plans, their renewable plans, to the department. They were due on October 15th. That same day, we had a grant due, turnaround assistance grant, which is, um, used to support, it's really a district allocation and that's used to support those schools and then any district-wide initiatives that could, that would, that would support those schools. So, in some ways, it's very specific. In some ways, it can be broad in terms of district-wide goals. So, they've written those plans. We're meeting with the individual schools to review those plans. And our hope is that, beginning in November, we could start having schools give brief presentations so that everybody understands what the school's goals are, what they, what their strategic objectives are, um, for kind of the year-long piece, how they're benchmarking and what strategies they're putting into place. So, we would start with our schools, uh, Fonska and Watson, as well as Talbot, who, they're receiving focused targeted support, but they are, they do remain in the second percentile in the state. So, we'd like to start with those schools and then move on to the other schools that require focused targeted support. And then, in the following months, have our other schools come in and do some work, um, presenting some work around their six.
Uh, Mr. Costa?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Dr. Curly. So, when I look at Watson's accountability, a couple of things come to mind. Um, obviously, we've known for some time that Watson's had its struggles, but, so if I was a kindergarten student when I came through the door in 2013, I went through my whole elementary career, if you will, or grades, in a school that was chronically underperforming. And then went off to one of our middle schools because, um, that just blows my mind that we've had a school for seven years. And I understand they changed the metrics in 2017 and came up with a new way of, of assessing our school, but that just blows my mind that we had seven years of, of chronically underperforming, underperformance and, so I know that we've tried with turnaround plans and additional supports, but when you're chronically underperforming, my understanding is the state provides intervention as well. Are they aware that they've been monitoring our schools for seven years and could they continue to be chronically underperforming?
Sure. I'm certainly, I mean, prior to the last three years-
Because I'm wondering who has the answer to fix that, because we can't have an elementary school for seven straight years be in, well, 2016 was 11%, 11th percentile, but we can't have elementary schools go seven years chronically underperforming. That's just a complete disservice to any student who's in that building. And I, I'm not, and I'm not trying to begrudge, or I'm not trying to, you know, point fingers here, but it just strikes me is that for seven years, with the state's intervention, we still can't figure out how to move the dial with Watson. And I understand the, the accountability change, but what, doesn't matter, I guess. Well, I guess it does matter what assessment you're using to assess your accountability, but the reality is, whether we use the old system or, or this new one, we're still not higher than the sixth percentile over the last couple of years. And so, that's concerning to me. I mean, Fonska, obviously, there's less time there, but hopefully, we don't stay on that path. I mean, designated in 2016 and here we are, 2020. In 18 and 19, we were in the fourth percentile. So, I, I just got some real concerns about those particular schools, Watson in particular. Fonska, you know, I, I think, you know, they may be eligible, it says, in 2020, but for Watson, I just, you know, I know there were some comments made back in the day when Cuss was first designated, our first chronically underperforming school. Fall River was sort of hit with that label, that we had the first chronically underperforming school in the state and, you know, Desi had all the answers on how we should fix it. And we said, "Okay, well, fine. Here, we'll turn it over. You, you tell us how to do it." And they said, "Oh, no, no. Like, you're gonna do it." And so, and we did it. My question is, if they have individuals who are in that school, working with the staff there, as well as the support that's given, why has it been seven years? And what, what's their answer to that? What have they said?
So, my most recent conversations with them really have been really around that piece of what now? I mean, at some point, um, there has to be more feedback and there has to be, um, better, more quality feedback, I would say, in terms of next step. So, right now, we're meeting, we are meeting with schools internally to present their plans and give them feedback. We're awaiting feedback from the department and we're making plans to go out to see what is happening in other districts. I mean, you're right. We did a phenomenal job, um, in, you know, I don't wanna say years ago, but in the past, we've done a phenomenal job in terms of turning around schools. And we, we feel like we have the know-how here in the district, um, but it's been a little while since we've seen that kind of success because we had this kind of newer crop of schools that come through and we're not getting the same kind of traction in year two and year three that we saw with those other schools. So, um, right now, our plan is to do some more intensive planning with people from the state and, and to get out and to see some other programs. And, I mean, they're, they're saying to us right now, like, we've got to figure out something more intensive in terms of the support for the schools and, um, the expectations of the schools and, and what we're seeing in the plans.
Right. And my concern with Watson is that it's a small school.
Mm-hmm.
So, the expectation, I guess, would be that some of these plans would eventually get some traction. You're talking about a small number of students. You know, I know there's differentiated learning going on there and I'm not begrudging, again, I've been to the school with Dr. Malone. I've witnessed with my own eyes the instruction going on there and, you know, kids are engaged. Staff are engaged. They were planning, I think, the day we went. They had their ILT going and, and they were working on, you know, how to make an impact. The concern that I have is that, like I said, if I walked through the door as a kindergarten in 2013, seven years later, I've now exited Watson and my whole time there, I was at a school that was getting, you know, that was in the lowest, you know, 11th percentile was the highest in those years, but you get my point.
No, absolutely.
I walked through the door and I exited and now I'm in middle school, maybe in Talbot, which is a feeder school. And if you only have to shift over, just over to the, to the left a little bit and Talbot's in the second percentile and another focused target, getting focused targeted support. So, those students are trickling into Talbot that's now struggling. And so, it's, and eventually, those students are gonna get to the high school, which is in that same boat or bucket, if you will. So, you know, I haven't looked closely at the document we just got regarding the number of students who are actually in school for Watson, but I really hope that we have students that are in classrooms before teachers, that are actually engaged in learning and not at home remote. And I understand that's an individual choice for parents, but I would, I would venture to guess that there, there, there's more benefit in having them in school, if we can safely, in front of our teachers, particularly those students, because again, you know, if they're remote and they're not engaged as, as much as they should be in their education, then we're not gonna see any improvement or much improvement.
I think that one of the somewhat unfortunate pieces is, um, in school year 2019, we did have, um, planning team come in, um, from the department and I and a couple of other people, along with members of the department, did some planning with Watson in that school year for a 2020 implementation. Um, new leadership team, some tweaking of the plan and, you know, they kind of rolled right in last year and got things moving. And again, we don't have that big ticket item in terms of MCAS to let them or anybody else know how they did in terms of progress from one year to the other. That's, I mean, but our big focus this year, really, with schools is to say, yes, we don't have MCAS, but we have to be looking at that interim district data because we have-
Right.
-a solid assessment system. We see that, we can see the comparison between our schools. We can look outside of our district for comparison and we know that's an assessment system that has, um, that in other districts who were using that data effectively, they were able to get some traction and make some movement.
Right. I'm not so worried that MCAS didn't occur-
Right.
-because we have measures. We have our benchmarks. We, we, in my opinion, we assess students in this district far too much.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, it just seems like we're always preparing for another benchmark. There's always this next benchmark. And, and I'm, I'm about accountability and measuring that. I just think we do that a lot.
Sure.
And, and so, when I look at Watson and, and the number of students that are remote, I'd say 138 of those students are remote. So-
They've got a very large percentage. And so, Watson ends up being a little bit different because other, um, all but one other school in the district, they, they have that cohort eight that we were inviting in every day. They have the substantially separate, um, students with disabilities and they have our foundational Ls. Watson doesn't have either one of those populations to anchor their in-person. So, you'll see it in a lot of other schools where they have that percentage and then there might be a 50/50 split or something between the other students. So, it puts them over, you know, 50, 60% in terms of who's coming to school. Watson doesn't have that and they're pretty much down the middle, but I think they're actually a school that leans more toward, a little bit more toward remote than they do for in-person. And they, and they don't have, they don't have that anchor of students who are invited to come four days a week, every week.
Of those students that are remote, how many are actually virtually present? How many are actually daily, online, receiving direct instruction? Again, we could, I guess, disaggregate that information or flush it out a little bit more, but I, I just raised that because, you know, I've heard Watson a number of times and I know we're trying and I know the state's trying to intervene with us, but at some point, you know, we gotta do something. And, and the plans are great and the targeted support's great and Desi's saying, "Well, you know, we didn't do MCAS. We can't figure," well, we have internal, whether we measure it against previous years or we measure it against other schools within our district, just for a reference point. I'm not a big fan of necessarily balancing, you know, measuring one school over another.
Right, right.
Different factors, but at least it gives us some idea of where that school is and whether it's making progress or not. But I, I, I'm looking forward to having, you know, Watson here to explain and I, I would really love to hear, again, from those at the state level that, that know, well, we need some of that.
Yeah, absolutely.
We do value turning around schools. And I'm trying to be tactful here, but you know where I'm going.
I understand.
So, I'll, I'll just leave it at that before I get a knock on my door, um, or, or the district gets a knock on the door. But the reality is that they've been watching and they've been participating and partnering with us in that school and yet it's been seven years now and we're still where we are. So-
Right.
It's not just a Fall River thing. Like, I yield.
Yeah. I, I, I got a couple of guys that wanna talk, but I do have to say something, Trace. There is no way that the data is gonna improve this year. Are they gonna assess us the same way they do in a full school year? Because you would do, as, uh, Mark pointed out, have, have more than half of the school home. And the small classes that are left behind, hopefully, they're gonna be getting good scores to bring up the others. But I can't, I can't for the life of me see how that's gonna change this year in this climate. We're almost a quarter of the way through and you've got kids that have been in school 10, 20 days. I don't know. How is that gonna work?
Probably about 10 days. I, I mean, I think, so the, the state's saying very little right now. Just saying that we're planning for it to happen. Like, yes, MCAS is happening. Let's just, just put that out there. So, that's, that's the only messaging that we're getting. There really hasn't been anything in terms of the details. What they look for on a regular basis is 95% participation. If we can't get to 95% participation unless you have 95% of your kids in school and every single one of them gets assessed. So, we know that that number will have to change. Um, they're talking only about in-person, only in-person testing, so there's not gonna be a remote option for kids who are fully remote. Um, I, I don't know. I mean, I've thought of a lot of what-ifs in my mind about kind of why they're doing it, what would be the purpose. A lot of it, I think, will have to do with, I don't wanna say just, not program evaluation, but I know they wanna get a feel for, if, if I'm a student who's come to school every year for the past three- if I'm a student who's come to school every year for the past three years, and I've taken MCAS, and now I'm working fully remotely, what does my growth look like that year? Am I, am I making great growth without a teacher? Because that would say something about either the quality of our remote offerings, or what a student wasn't getting for quality, I mean, so I feel like there's something there. The one thing I, they haven't said, I would say pretty confidently, is district will be held harmless, there's no doubt about it.
Yes.
Schools will be held harmless, but what it means for a school like Watson, for Fonsaker, who's relying on this data, and needs multiple years of data, where they're showing sustained improvement, this year ends up being a wash for them, in a year where they're just gonna, like, stay put again, and if the supports in the, there's no additional funding, or, so it's like, if the supports from the state just remain what they are, and we're not making any movement, they're just stuck.
And then come back to next year, if things change radically, and we got these kids in with all the gaps
Right.
And now they're all back, and we're gonna get assessed next year? I had a conversation today with Lieutenant Governor about MCAS, and I said, I don't know how anyone with a clear conscience could say, we're gonna assess these kids with that test, it makes no sense. I, I don't think we're, I think we're two or three years away from being able to use that as an accurate measurement, because of the gaps, and, I mean, when you look, as the number, Mark was pointing out about the number of kids home at Watson, on homeschooling, which we all hope they're getting all they can, but at the same time, we aren't comfortable, I'm not, that that's what's going on, we're gonna be in a real struggle with that school for a few years to come, I believe. I don't, I don't, I mean, you can write the, I know you, Tracy, you can write the best plan in the world, but implementing it's gonna be another world, you know that.
Right, I mean, it, it's different.
Yeah.
It's all of those things where, you know, we said to schools, as they are writing, in the spring and into the summer, writing their plans, on one, you know, on one hand, we need schools to kind of not make excuses, not say, we can't get this work done, our kids can't make progress, our, our teachers can't do their jobs, we don't want people to ever take that stance, but at the same time, being cognizant of the fact that there are hurdles there that has never been there before, so...
Okay, okay, I'm sorry, guys, Tommy then, Kevin?
Dr. Curly, I want to preface my remarks by saying thank you for all of the hard work, you know, on your part, for the turnaround that's gone around in the past, you guys have really supported our schools very, very diligently, and with great purpose. The schools that are in red, they've been in this position for an extended period of time. Fonsaker and Watson have been in this position for a number of years, we haven't been able to move the needle. Given the conditions we're all facing now with COVID-19, I personally would declare MCAS completely irrelevant, and I want to send that message loud and clear to Desi. MCAS has no relevancy in these times, and so the accountability ratings, although they're very important, I think right now is the time where we need to fashion some new standards. We need to look at middle school kids and create pathways towards career and technical education. The growth of CTE programming in a gateway city like Fall River would be so incredibly important to the workforce of the 21st century, and we can begin to fashion that, because we're gonna have a state-of-the-art facility at Durfee, and we can retrofit other schools, given that we can change the accountability in the future, for, for different pathways, instead of the pressure of MCAS, and what it's doing to our teachers in the classroom, and what it's doing to our principals, school by school. I'm especially concerned, on a personal level, for my friends, many of them who are principals and teachers in the system, and weighing the stress of the accountability ratings for MCAS. So, this is not, my comments aren't directed toward you or our committee, but to the Department of Education and Secondary Education in Malden, that's what my comments are directed to. I hope they get this message loud and clear, we need new accountability fashions, we, we need to get rid of this, because I see, I went to Watson's school, for me to see Watson stuck in this percentile, it, it pains me, because I, I thought I got a great, I'll echo the Vice Chairman's comments, I got a great education when I was there. I went to Durfee High School, I got a great education when I went to Durfee High School. There were a few holes in my education, it wasn't perfect, but it was good enough to get me into college and a great career. So, I've had a great time being educated in my city of Fall River, which is a gateway city, which suffers year to year to year to year with lower appropriations in Chapter 70, and with the inequity that we've been dealt with over the past, I don't know, 30 years or so, and, and I don't understand how we're gonna dig ourselves, you know, out of the hole that we're in, especially with COVID-19 hanging over our heads. With that, I'll yield, but also, I wanted to say one more time, Dr. Curly, thank you for all your hard work and attempts at helping all our schools to turn around and give forth their best, their best efforts. With that, I yield, Mr. Chairman.
Kevin?
During, whether it's COVID or not, what is the expectation for our students to learn the standards in each grade level, correct?
Grade level standards, yes.
So, I, I think that's really the focus, and if you teach the standards, in my opinion, you're gonna end up with higher scores on your own assessments, MCAS, or any of that other stuff, so the bottom line is, is we have to, even in these conditions, teach the standards to the best of our ability to all of our students, that's just a fact, I don't want to get, you know, confused about the MCAS piece, but what is Watson, I looked at when Mr. Costa was talking, I was looking at the, it's over 50% of the students have chosen full remote, is that a two-unit school?
Yes.
So, like, based on our conversation before, if I just look, first grade is 20, 10, and 6, for 36 students, is that two full-time teachers?
That is, yes.
In each grade, so, one person has the 20?
So, is that for B, C, and D? Yeah, so one person would have 20, and one person would have 16, they'll have 10 students coming in one week, and six students coming in the next.
And the same thing goes, the two
Yes.
It's a two-unit school, so, some of them are a little high, like, one has 30, second grade has 30 students, so that remote person has 30, and one person has, the other person has the 10 and 7.
Right.
They don't, there's no other staff that shift to help, like, with a specialist or anything?
I'll be honest with you, I'm not sure at that particular grade level at Watson, I don't, I, I think they are split, just the 30, 17, we do have some other schools where, when they got above a manageable number in the remote, they did repurpose, like, a class, an interventionist, who then was no longer providing intervention to students, that teacher was repurposed and became a, a classroom teacher, and would remain in that capacity until we were all back at school, and they could resume their other duties, but I do think that at Watson, the person is taking 30, and the other has 17.
Yeah, just, and the reason, the reason why I asked for the information before is because if we didn't have this conversation, I wouldn't know that, so this committee doesn't get, we don't know those numbers, and repurposing of positions, that's the reason why I was asking for the data.
And I also just want to add that some schools did do things where they actually do split, they've departmentalized in a way, so that a teacher might teach a literacy block to students in person, and then go next door and teach it, teach that same lesson to students who are working fully remote, and then their counterpart is doing the math and science and things like that, so they've been able to break up those uneven caseloads in that way, by having teachers work across cohort, but that was done at teachers' discretion, and where people felt comfortable to do that, and in most cases, where people went to their principals and said they wanted to do that.
Yeah, the, the only thing, and I agree with having them come before, so it'd be great, I know in the past, we've talked about a small school like that being very difficult to serve all of the needs of the students, because you only have the two units, it's, you can't really, you know, focus in on the kids that need it as much as the others, and, you know, it was mentioned that maybe making that school a early learning school that we all say we need, and using those students and moving them to another school that can give those resources and interventions and all that, and some people were all worked up over, but when we look at seven, eight years of not working, we can either continue to do the same thing, or we can do something big and bold moving forward, so I'm still looking at those as options for me personally, and I hope that everyone looks at them as well. With that, I yield, thank you for your info.
Anything further in this discussion? Okay, thank you, Dr. Curly. Next item up, 11.2, Discussion and Vote to Approve the School Year 2021 School Committee Superintendent's Goals, as presented by Dr. Matthew Malone.
These are updated from the last, what we originally started working on, it's the second read, and hopefully you can vote to approve them, and, and we'll go from there.
Do I have a motion?
Motion to accept.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and second, discussion, Kevin?
Yeah, just, I'm having a hard time figuring out what was changed from the ones we got before to the one we have now.
Yeah, it was, we tightened up the language to include more of the turnaround practices that Vice J. Costa mentioned, plus on the operations side, we updated the operations piece around the facilities, can include transportation. Should've color-coded it, but I didn't, I'm sorry.
Yeah, the, the other thing I, that I've always asked for, and I, I don't really see it here, is when we talk the goals from last year to this year, do they get an update of whether we met them, we didn't, like, how did we do on the goals?
You would've got that if we did this off-evaluation. Well, it's in this off-evaluation, so you have that, that's all been sent to the committee members, you have that.
Right, so, we're gonna approve this one before we approve the
Yeah.
I'll speak for myself, I think we, we should hold off on these until we get a chance to figure out whether we met those or not, so if this comes to vote today, I'm gonna vote against it, just for that reason, and we have to understand where we, before we create new goals, we have to know whether we met the ones we did, or we didn't, so with that, I yield.
Anything further on the superintendent's goals? Tom?
Okay, as far as superintendent's goals, I have a question in regard, in, in the section of facilities and transportation, I'm concerned about how we've really looked at our routing and tiering of our school bus routes, and if there has been any improvement over the past, say, maybe three to four years, as, as we try to make our transportation costs somewhat more efficient moving forward.
We made huge improvements, I'll let Ken speak to the specifics about that.
So, the, the, as far as the routing goes, we've, we've done quite a few changes with the new software, become, I think, much more efficient, timing-wise, that efficiency has led to more tiering, so basically, we were able to, even with COVID, even with the, the situation that we're in, we were able to pick up some extra tiers in certain schools that we weren't able to tier last year. The, the routing and tiering also allowed us to take a better look at start and end times of the schools, and then work those into that, that formula, so I think we are much better off, and the cost of transportation has stabilized, so we were taking, you know, million and a half, $2 million jumps for the four years that I've been here, and we've stable
I noticed that as well.
And, and I think that, moving forward, as we look at placement of students, which the, the PACE has done very well, checking to make sure that we're trying to get our students in their, their district school, their home school, neighborhood school, and making sure that if, by every, by every turn in our, in our planning with transportation, that we're trying to eliminate as much transportation as we possibly can each time, so I, I think that we've made some, some tremendous headway, just stopping the bleeding, so to speak, on the cost of, of transportation.
Yeah, so I, I respect that very much, Ken, I know that this is a different year, I know numbers are all astray because more, because of the remote piece, but do you also feel like maybe projecting forward, let's say, school resumes to normal sometime next year, and there's, you know, the old big numbers again, 10,000 kids per day, you know, do you see that it's, it's gonna stay stabilized?
I, I do, because the, the basic plan, or the bidding process, was put in place before COVID, so the numbers were those numbers, so we didn't bid in a COVID year, we bid the year before it all hit, and those numbers stand true, and I don't believe that we're gonna have such an uptick in the amount of students taking transportation, unless we have an awful lot of influx of new families in areas that we currently don't service well, so...
Thank you, Ken, I yield.
Anything further on the goals? Deb, please call them, oh, I'm sorry, Josh, go ahead, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I just had a question for the superintendent in regards to the gate program that we was talking about in the goals, I just want to ensure that we have something in place where our gifted fourth graders this year, while the program's on hold, are receiving a sort of, you know, a boost in their curriculum, where they're having some more challenging work, so that way they can excel, even though the program's kind of on the hold.
Yes, so, as we talked, or I know you asked me specifically, and tonight I can report that we've hired our consultant that we've worked with before, which is Katie Novak, who's the guru of universal design for instruction, which is the model for how teachers in a core classroom can have, you know, your highest, fastest runners, if you will, and your slowest readers all working together, but at different paces within the curriculum, so that differentiated instruction piece, so those fourth graders, all those teachers are being trained, what do we pick, third and fourth grade teachers?
Fourth, fourth, fifth.
Fourth and fifth grade teachers are all being trained this year, we've worked with Katie several, for several years, in various capacities, but we've rolled this out with the fourth and fifth grade teachers, so that they can get that professional development, so that we can push the rigor with the current, because there is no current fourth grade gate program, we do have it in fifth grade, but we feel that all the fourth and fifth grade teachers really need to be trained up to, to have this kind of rigorous experience, so that's happening concurrent with, as we continue to try to figure out, how does gate evolve into the middle-level honors program across the three schools, so that would be our work this year, to come back to the committee in the spring, to talk about how, what the next steps are for that. So, yes, the answer is, we've gone out, we've contracted, we have a training schedule in place, we've done everything that we need to do to ensure that our teachers are getting the training to be able to provide that fourth and fifth grade experience to kids.
Okay, thank you, I yield.
Hearing nothing, Deb, please call them, oh, I'm sorry.
Just one question on that, can, and I'm not looking for it now, but could we get either something maybe from the Assistant Superintendent for instruction on how a UDL program, like you talked about with Tracy Novak, is gonna be, basically expounding upon what you just said, because I'm having a hard time understanding how that is equal to an honors program, or the vice versa, so I'm not looking for the answer now, but if we could get something at some point
At some point, we will.
I think it'll make it a clear, a clearer picture of where we're heading with the gate for some of the people that are concerned.
Yeah, we'll update our gate report, we'll include all that in it, because we did a really good, great report that you got last year.
Yep, thank you.
So, we'll do that.
Thanks.
Deb, please.
Mr. Agia?
No.
Mr. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Harv?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Ms. Larve?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. Item 11.3 is a Discussion and Vote to Approve the Job Description for the following: Assistant Superintendent for Student Support Services and Strategic Intervention, LPN Student Registration and Support, Strengthening Conditioning Trainer, as presented by Tom Coogan, Director of Human Resources.
Good evening.
Good evening.
If I could suggest we take the LPN job description first, Ms. Long's been patiently waiting over there to assist us, and maybe we can get her freed up. So, the position of LPN, and we have, have had as many as two LPNs in the district over previous years, currently, the only LPN we have is in a medically fragile room, and that position grew out of the, the need for those, those students in the medically fragile room, and feeding tubes, and, and other medical needs that those students have, so what we did was we retooled the nurse job description and focused in on the LPN. The purpose of this position would be to assist Nurse Long with the intake and screening of students and their medical records and their medical records during registration at the PACE Center, and also the ability to assist her with fill-in duties as a substitute nurse when needed. The LPN can work in a building in conjunction with the RN. So the purpose of this position is really to sort of lighten the load on the intake process and registration process for students coming in, the screening of medical records, which currently is done by nurses in the schools, and to streamline that process, as well as the ability to interact with the parents during the registration process around any medical needs and any specific needs for the students coming into the buildings. In addition, that frees up Nurse Long to be able to do more school visits and more site management, and obviously that's a critical thing at this time, given the needs under COVID.
Motion to approve, it makes sense. Do I have a second?
Second.
Want to call the roll on that, Deb? We'll go one at a time.
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Costa?
Abstain.
Mr. Harv?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Ms. Larve?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
I'll abstain too. Next one.
Okay, the next one I would like to address is the Assistant Superintendent for Student Support Services and Strategic Integration. The purpose of this revision, and this is really just a sort of a condensing and a revision of the job description that was created when we split the former Assistant Superintendent Ian Dargan's position and Michael Loche's position to address the different areas of not only the special needs department, but also the student support department. Under the original job description, there was about 42 bullets of different support services that were to be provided by this position, and what we've done is condensed it and made this position focus more on the managing of the resources of those departments, and really more of a director of how to allocate those resources and how to follow up on managing those supports for students. Items one through five really focus on the big picture of the position. Item six through 10 talk about managing the resources involved in our student support services, and strategically planning on how to allocate those resources. Items 11 through 17 really talk about building the culture and the support services that exist at the school level, and the areas that that position is designed to supervise. And items 18 through 25 talk about some of the compliance pieces and the DESE reporting that's involved in that position. So we've gone from 40 odd bullets down to 25 bullets, and basically condensed and streamlined the previous job description to be a little bit more focused on the executive level functions of this position.
Any questions? Kevin?
So when this got brought up at the last meeting, I had made a suggestion that we have to take into consideration all the other changes that have happened over the last several years with other increases in positions. Did I miss a document or anything related to that? So when we were talking about potentially adding another assistant superintendent for student services, my suggestion and request at that time was to take that not by itself, but to understand that it was an issue of we didn't have in the past a director of guidance for the district, we didn't have a SEL coordinator for the district. Other positions that have happened when we used to have two assistant superintendents, so I'm having a hard time, you know, going along with this without having a good picture of exactly what is happening across the district. Like we have other people that are in, we've increased everybody's positions, which sometimes we do. Okay, we're going to make another director of this, we're going to make another director of that, and then we add on, okay, we're going to have another assistant superintendent.
It's not true, Kevin. That's confused. We've always had this position. So we had this position for two years, we budgeted it for this year, we have this position.
Yep.
So we've reconfigured the job description to include the whole facet entirety of this work, student support, the SEL, and then the other operational work that goes with it. It's a critical need for us, we live without it now for four to five months, and underneath, in terms of changes, we have, right, over the last several years, two years ago, we have a lead SAC, a directive guidance, which we've always had, and I believe that's it under that umbrella. So what we're trying to do is, again, streamline, get a position created that makes sense for where we are as a district to align the student support side of academic development, which is critical, and that's one of the reasons why we broke it apart three years ago from SPED, to really focus on those issues, that's what this does. But it's not a new or another assistant superintendent, we've had it for three years.
No, I understand that. My my comment is basically, when we originally created the position, we had a person in the job that was the special ed and assistant superintendent for student services, I agree with you. Since that time of us approving this, we now have created other administrative positions district wide that add to it. And I'm not trying to say to minimize the need, what I'm saying is that in order for us to determine whether we need this position at this time or any other positions is, we have to get a good picture of exactly what the lay of the land is across the whole district, and that's why I asked at the last meeting that we get some information if this does get brought back, so we can feel confident, at least I can tell you I would feel confident, in going with it, knowing what is everyone else going to be doing that we just created these new positions. And I, it's just disheartening that we have meetings, we ask for info, we don't get it, and then I make a statement here, and then I get, people look at me like as if I'm giving somebody a hard time. But at the end of the day, I asked for something last meeting if this got brought back, it didn't, you know, we don't get any information on it. I don't necessarily disagree with this particular position, but if we ask for something, any member of this committee asks for something, they should get it so that we can feel confident, all of us voting for it, so.
I will, I will say, Kevin, that I don't think there's a superintendent in the country that provides the school committee with as much information as I have to this committee in every single question, comments, concerns that we do. Some things, we've had discussions about what we can't produce, but we've given all the information that the committee has asked for, I'm sorry if I didn't feel that we have.
You can't go, you can't wiggle your way out of the fact that, here's the facts. The fact of the matter is, is when this position was brought up at the last meeting, I asked for certain backup information. Today, we don't have that backup information, that's a fact. Whether you give us other stuff or not is not the issue. The bottom line is, is I asked for something to try to get myself so that I could support it, we didn't get it, the committee doesn't have that information, so now we're being asked to, you know, create a position, and
We're not being asked to create a position, Kevin. There's a position that's funded, and what you're asked to do is support the consolidation of the job description. The position was already budgeted and approved in the budget that the school committee adopted. We're not asking to create a new position. It's the same assistant superintendent position that we've aligned what we feel we need of all the responsibilities. It's not a new position.
I understand.
You've just said it's a new position.
And I'm supportive of the SEL, all of those things. What I'm suggesting is that we don't have the big picture of exactly what's happening. The other piece that is concerning of me is we've got a lot of stuff going on in this district right now, and I'm not sure that now is the right time to create another high-level administrative position under the current situation. So with that said, I'd make a motion, we table this until the next meeting, so we can figure out, get all the information that has been asked for, and see where the committee is at at that time to fill the position. I don't think filling that, waiting one month is going to kill anybody with tableing this for one month.
Not hearing a second. Tom?
I had a question on the job description itself.
Well, go ahead.
Okay, so at this point, I'd just like to honor a former employee who was in this position, Dr. Anne Dargan. I thought she did a great job, sorry to see her go. But in any case, one thing that I would consider on the job description, Mr. Coogan, is collaboration with agencies in the city as well. It's part of such a high-level management position for the Fall River Schools that this person would have maybe quarterly meetings with some of the agencies that feed our schools, such as the Boys and Girls Club, such as the YMCA, such as CD Recreation, agencies such as that, you know, to have them at the table with this person because it helps to round out a lot of the scope of the work that goes into this population of students that we have. So I just, I didn't know if that might be something we could add to the job description itself as well.
Mr. Corey, if you take a look at item number 23 on the second page of that job description.
All right.
I think that relates to what you're trying to get at, but we can certainly expand that language if we need to.
Yeah, it'll be liaising with the entire community.
School-based community counseling and support partners, so those would, that would cover the community partnerships that we're talking about.
Yeah.
But I mean, if you feel like, as though that needs more language, we're certainly, you know.
No, 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 I missed that one. The print was a little bit small, excuse me. But no, no, I appreciate seeing that there, because that's an integral part in the scope of all of this work moving forward.
And in the effort to try to get it from 40 down to less than, you know, 25 or less, you know, we did sort of shrink the print as well as, you know, condense some of the items, so I appreciate the input.
There you go. My second question is to the superintendent, will there be a screening committee?
Yes, would you like to serve on it?
Thank you.
Because I would, I would ask, I can have up to two members of the committee serve on, and I've done this in the past, so as you know, for these types of positions, screening committee, finalist brought forward to me, then I make a recommendation to the full committee, so the committee members would have then two opportunities to to voice concerns. So, as I said, usually how we do these things, I ask for volunteers. I can have two people.
Do you have to two?
Sure.
Can we vote?
So moved.
So moved, so we ready to vote on the position? Deb?
I didn't get a second.
Oh, we didn't get a second on the
I'll second it.
No, my motion was to select Mr. Corey and Mr. Agia as the individuals to serve on that committee.
Do we get a second on that?
So moved, so seconded.
So we'll vote on that first, and then we'll go back to the main question. Deb, please.
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Harv?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Ms. Larve?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. Now on the position for the assistant superintendent.
Motion to approve.
Seconded.
Deb, please call the roll.
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Harv?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Ms. Larve?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. And the last position is the Strength and Conditioning Trainer.
So this position is being brought forth as a proposal for a full-time position that would exist at the at the new center that's been created at the high school. If you haven't seen the center, I encourage you to go take a look at it, it's really a more of a health club-type atmosphere. What we're envisioning with the proposal of this position is somebody who's really dedicated to fulfilling the management of that site, but is not locked into a, necessarily a teacher's day, so it gives us some flexibility around the hours. 200 days per year is the proposed work schedule, which would give us some ability to work outside of the regular 183 days that teachers work, but at the same time, the ability to hold some seminars, training sessions, and other times during other key times of the year when they're ramped up for a season or when there's specific strength and training needs. We're looking for a couple of specific certifications. A bachelor would be preferred, bachelor's degree would be preferred, as well as a few of the certifications that are typical to a strength and conditioning coach position. And there's a suggested salary range, which we can talk about in line with the days and commitment that we're looking at, and I'll put that on the table from there. You'll see that the position takes a blend of performance responsibilities for items one through 14. The required qualifications are at the bottom of the first page, items one through seven, and then there's some suggested workday conditions on the second page.
Motion to approve with a question.
Seconded.
Okay, and motion, second, Paul had his hand up first.
Sure.
Okay, Paul.
Mr. Coogan, so this is a very good position, it's very much needed for the district, and it is going to be for the district. We're looking at also middle school sports for this particular individual.
This position would, yeah, this position would be for the entire athletic program.
For the entire district. And also too, that it will, he will, he or she will work a full day for the 200 days.
Correct.
You're talking about training sessions, which is good, and the only other thing I would maybe say, and you probably have it probably figured out anyway, as far as the the scheduling of the training sessions for the schools, I'm sorry, for the Durfee High School, but also the middle schools, if that's the plan too, and I think that would be important. But also as well, to schedule, obviously, there's going to be a fall schedule for the training director and a spring schedule as well, and I think if it's possible, I'm not saying that we look at it right away, because we'll let that person, you know, once they're hired, to feel, to feel what, get the feelers out there to see what kind of scheduling is going to take place, because that's going to be very, very important for this to succeed for all the scholastic athletes. But also too, there might be some need down the road for maybe an assistant. So that's all, it's the only thing, I'm looking down the road a little bit. I'm not saying that we're going to do that right now or a year from now, but that's something maybe to think about to assist that person. So that's all I have to say, thank you.
Deb?
Yeah, I think it's a much-needed position based on a Division One school, you know, top-of-the-line, top-notch, you know, stuff, I think it's a good position. I wasn't sure if I looked at it, if it says in the job description, they normally say something like any other duties that the boss assigned, like whether it's the athletic director, principal, whoever, because I can imagine that we would need to be flexible with what the position does and doesn't do, but they'd be answerable to somebody suggesting that we need help doing something that doesn't fit one of those criteria. Does it say that in there? I can't recall.
I don't think there's specifically what
Or is that just implied in?
What I refer to as
If you want me to add it, we can add it.
Yeah, I would just add something, like any kind of comment at the end where it says, and any other duties as assigned, so that we don't have a situation where we, I'm just thinking of the high school, if this person needed to cover a class or, you know, their session or something, is that, oh, I can't do that, or I think if we put any other duties assigned, it might make sense. With that, I yield.
Mark?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The only, I guess hesitation or reluctance I have is just the 200-day work year, particularly for that salary range. You know, is there any reason why we're not asking this to be a full-year position where, over the summer, that this individual can be available to run sessions, physical fitness classes for student athletes over the summer, or, not as a summer camp, but, you know, strength and conditioning camp where students sign up and are able to, in the summer months, go and access the facility and with the oversight of this individual? I mean, I just think, you know, $42,000 to $55,000, you know, for a 200-day work year, I mean, I guess it gives us some flexibility outside of the regular school year, but, you know, my thoughts and, you know, certainly members of the committee feel like I do, can certainly change it, but I just think that we have an opportunity here to have an individual that can be available year-round through the summer months to allow for strength and conditioning classes or seminars or whatever with our student athletes that we're going to miss out on if, or there'll be a need and someone will be coming back saying, we have this great facility that's shuttered in the summer months, and we'd like to pay a stipend for this individual to come in and work outside of it. So if that's the case, I'd rather address it now in this job description and
Right.
lengthening the number of days worked, and then I think I'd feel a little more comfortable with the salary range. But as it is, I could tell you right now, I'm going to vote no, but that's okay. I mean, I'm not just saying, I mean
So we went back and forth with this concept of time, and you're right, Mark, that, you know, we struggle with trying to figure out what the balance is in terms of the number of days, because you're right, it should be a full year with flex time, given the, where you have off-seasons and those kinds of things. So I don't know what the answer is in terms of the, what that number of days is, but
It doesn't, it doesn't fall into a bargaining unit, so it's not bound by like a traditional schedule. We picked a number of days and a salary based on a survey of other positions within the state and within the country, and the range seemed to be 40 to 43 on the low end, using data as old as 2018, and on the high end, obviously, when you get into a strength and conditioning coach at the college or outside the secondary level, the numbers go much higher, but the ranges seem to be in the
I raised that because we essentially have 17 additional days outside of 183-day calendar year, so I mean, it gives you a little flexibility to have this individual available once school closes for a week or so, and maybe a week prior to school opening, but really doesn't give us that flexibility where, in the summer months to school opening, but really doesn't give us that flexibility where in the summer months, if there are students, athletes coming in for the fall season, why aren't we availing ourselves to running classes, seminars, whatever the case may be, so.
Let me just correct one point, let me just ask, if I may, Mr. Coogan, uh, is the assistant A D two-hundred?
It, it is currently one-ninety-five, I believe.
Right, well, that was one of the things that we did, but, Mark, if we did something around two-hundred-and-ten day, days, I mean, that sounds, because you're right, we'd be coming back and asking for some sort of stipend for those summer programming camps and, and those kinds of things.
And then what happens to the facility that we're spending all this money on making a fitness center, if in the summer months, we're going to shut the doors and turn off the lights and lock the doors and not use it? And so, I would imagine if you're going to open up the doors and give access to anybody, the person whose responsibility is going to be to maintain it, oversee it, provide information in terms of budget for the facility, should be there. I, I.
No, we, I don't disagree.
How about sixteen, how about eight hours times two-hundred days is sixteen hundred hours, and then you let them figure it out? Like, is that how we do the trainer? Trainer per season gets X amount, so if we did the equivalent of, so let's say in the downtime, the person only needs to work four hours, they adjust, so the salaries for the year, you get X amount, but you, that's how I thought this was, was presented, as two-hundred days times eight hours a day is sixteen hundred hours.
I talked to, uh, Mark today about it a little bit, we kicked it around, I, I know, I'd like to see either two-ten or two-fifteen on days, I'm, I don't have a problem with what is Kevin saying about the guy puts a four hours in on Tuesday or four hours in on Wednesday, but I know what it's like at that high school, and during Christmas, um, Christmas vacation or February vacation, there are teams in there, and there are kids in there, so I'm saying, those are going to be those odd days when he goes in at four to eight for an afternoon ballgame, if some kids are injured, they want to work out, I mean, I was in that fitness room the other day, it is gorgeous, so I think, you know, you want to do something like that, I, I'm, I'm, I'm kind of with Mark on that one, I'm more inclined to, uh, support it. Two-fifteen and give, I can give him the flexibility Kevin's talking about, I don't care if the guys, if the guys in there Saturday morning.
We're building in that flexibility anyway, so you could be there Saturdays and.
You got, you got, you got programs on Saturday running there, so the guys in there half a day, there's, they're half a day, I don't give a care.
Right, that's what the flex time was all about.
Go ahead, Mark, sorry.
No, it's okay, no, I, I, listen, I, I wanted to have a discussion because I think we'll, we'll get to a place where I think we'll all feel comfortable with it. The only question I had was, was that a consideration, that if this person's going to be responsible for the oversight of this facility, what happens in the summer? Was there any thought given to what we would do, or, or was it that we were just going to lock the doors, turn off the lights and not use it?
No, that wasn't a good.
Because you'd need this person there in order to open those doors.
You know, I was thinking about some sort of coming back at some point to say, well, how could we have a, a summer camp to be able, if you will?
Right, which means an additional stipend for either this person or.
It makes more sense to do it the way that you're articulating.
Wrap it all in now.
It makes more sense to do it the way you're articulating.
All right, so.
I, I don't have a problem supporting a college kid, I'm sorry, Kev, go ahead.
Just, uh, like, trying to find, uh, an equal situation, so principals work a twelve-month contract with five weeks' vacation?
Yeah, something, yeah.
Is that something that, what does that come out to for days relative to the one-ninety-five, two-ten, two-fifteen?
Two-hundred and, uh.
Thirty or something, is it?
The number of days?
It's two-hundred, it's two-hundred and seventy-seven workdays in a year essentially, and minus five weeks off of that, twenty-five days.
Two-forty-three.
Yeah.
So why don't we do that, like, it's, you know, you got five weeks' vacation and, uh, you work all year? I think that makes sense.
I'm okay with, with whatever the committee decides.
With flexibility, it makes sense to give flexibility to say.
I didn't want a PD coming in today, so, I mean, it makes sense that, that, that you guys are really pushing, I, I support it.
And obviously, the, the vacation time will be, you know, considered by the supervisor in terms of the needs of, of the position, so.
At the time, right.
Can't take five straight weeks in the summer off because we might need that facility open, so we might have to split it up, but, you know, however it's structured is fine, I just want, we're spending a ton of money on that facility, it's a gorgeous facility, I want students to have access to it in the summer months if necessary, on any of the vacations we have, and, so, I think the salary would speak better to having someone there full year than it does two-hundred days, that's just my opinion.
And is that what the S N's get, five weeks? Are the typical S N's?
The high, yes.
It depends on the position.
Yeah, but they, they get, do they all get four weeks, five weeks if they're year-round? What do they get, the same as the principal?
Well, there's a range between three weeks.
There's a range depending on the level of the position.
Minimum four? I mean, what, what?
This is a burnout position, so we, we would assume that we, we try to get to a place and we bring that.
About five weeks? So I'm, I'm, make a motion to amend it to full year with five weeks' vacation, to, to duplicate what principals get.
Seconded.
It's okay. Do I have a motion, Mr. Agia, do I have a second?
A second.
Second, sorry, Tommy. Uh, Josh, did you have your hand up? No? Okay.
Yeah, he does.
I was gonna, I was gonna have my own question, not on his motion.
Okay, hold on a minute.
Mr., Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, Josh.
Yeah, so I'm, I'm with my colleagues on this, uh, this person utilized all year, um, so whatever language has to change, let's do it right now and, uh, make it happen. Thank you, my word.
Tom?
Full year, five weeks' vacation.
Full year, five weeks, yeah.
So I just want to revert back to the, the, uh, job itself, I'm gonna, I'm gonna bring up one of our greats, retired schoolteacher, uh, taught human anatomy and, uh, Durfee personal trainer, Paul Peliquin. Um, one of the hallmarks of Paul's career, he really took that job seriously, he was a great physical trainer for us in the phys ed department, he also had an opportunity to train the Olympics in the late seventies, and, uh, this is a hallmark of his career, and I remember him telling me how important it is to have physical, a really good physical trainer on-site for the student athletes, and as a Division One school, I, I, I really liked the way you guys were envisioning this entire position. My question with this position is, will this strength and conditioning person also work to help the physical trainer side by side, uh, given the caseload of work that the physical trainer, uh, has with, with the, uh, plethora of student, uh, athlete injuries that present themselves? So I know that strength and conditioning is going to help to reduce injuries over time, so they'll be working hand in hand with the personal trainer. My second question is, is as they progress in time, are there workshops for them to attend, uh, or are there P D, you know, professional develop, other professional development opportunities for them, what does that look like going on down the road?
So the field of kinesiology has really grown in leaps and bounds over the last twenty to thirty years, and one of the things that we would envision would be that Kelly Mahoney, who is our physical trainer, who really scrambles to cover all the bases she has to cover during all those seasons, um, would work hand in hand with this person. This person's job is to help develop the strength and conditioning and tailor exercises to the specific sports needs of those teams, along with the coaching teams. Once those routines are set up, it would really be more the coach that works with them, but they would manage the site and, and, and help that.
Yeah.
In addition to that, if there are specific injuries that occur, in concert with Ms. Mahoney, that person would then work to strengthen and rehabilitate those injuries, working with a physical therapist or working with the team, as well as Ms. Mahoney, to make sure that the recovery from that injury goes smoothly and that the student gets back to a hundred percent. So it's not only, it's preventive, but it's also rehabilitative, if, if I can sort of draw that spectrum.
Will our facility provide the amount of equipment to help them, you know, achieve those goals?
I can't wait for you to see it, because, uh, Mr. Coogan, Mayor Coogan really hit the nail on the head when he said how impressive the, it is, so, we, we got, we finally have all the tools and resources to really build a, a, a high-level quality. Smooth sounds of jazz, one oh-six-point-seven. Ding-dang, ding-dang. So the answer's yes.
Thanks, thank you, Tommy.
Storm's coming, there is. Weather report.
All right, so then we have, we have.
On the amendment, first, I think.
Yeah, we have Kevin's motion first, to amend it to a, uh, full-time job with five weeks' vacation. Deb, please call the roll.
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Har?
Yes.
Mr. Hetzel?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Ms. Larrabee?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes.
Thank you.
Uh, the second motion was to approve the position, Deb, please call the roll.
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Har?
Yeah.
Mr. Hetzel?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Ms. Larrabee?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. Item number eleven-point-four is a discussion and vote to approve the September, October COVID hiring quest for, request for not to exceed a hundred and twenty thousand dollars.
Motion to approve.
Seconded.
I need discussion on the motion, Kev.
The, um, this is similar to the two-hundred thousand we did last month.
Yes, we did, uh, two-hundred thousand, and of that, uh, we spent about a hundred and seventy, so there's thirty thousand left, we filled, uh, one technology, uh, teacher position and two, um, uh, English language learner positions, we anticipate and we're only asking for a hundred and twenty, uh, uh, in, to be held in reserve, we anticipate we're, we're finding increased need with bilingual school adjustment councils, uh, so we know that there'll be, uh, some needs, we're monitoring those, uh, but we're being very, uh, I think, practical, uh, response, and you can see that we've, uh, we've stayed within the guidelines and the parameters provided.
Yeah, my only concern is that we're using the CARES money, uh, what I would, and the, but, regular budget is three items down, but my concern would just be that there's a hundred and twenty thousand in savings in the regular budget outside of CARES money, that the CARES money we can carry over, if I recall, so I would make the recommendation, if you're going to spend anything, just spend it out of the money, uh, in new positions, let's say, up to that value, but find it from the regular budget rather than the CARES, because I, I'm still very concerned that next year we're not, we don't have the CARES money anymore.
So, we, I don't disagree with you, Kevin, and you also know that we have two-hundred thousand dollars unexpended in contingency, which we haven't spent. The reason why I, I didn't bring it forward that way is just to hold that, but I agree with you that think about the CARES as the contingency, spend it out of the operating, we don't create a structural problem, so I, I support you, your thinking on that if the committee, uh, approves this.
So, um, did we make a motion on this already? So I'll make a motion to amend it to spend it out of operating? Rather than CARES?
Just get a second with a question, I'll second it with a question, just because.
Oh, go ahead, I'm sorry.
So, Mr. Almeida, do we have in professional salaries the ability to fund the positions that Dr. Malone's talking about, or the potential need for bilingual SAC?
Yes.
So, so I, then I agree, I, I, I would just withdraw my motion to approve the use of COVID, uh, money, um, as requested, because if you have the available money in professional salaries, and I'd much rather see it come out of operating budget than out of the CARES money, because CARES money's obviously there for purposes of supporting us, the district, through this period of time, and it, it is money that's not going to be there year after year, and the operating budget is what it is, and we certainly make other adjustments within our operating budget, so if the money's there, then, you know, certainly, I, I will draw my motion to approve the use of a hundred and twenty thousand dollars, um, of the CARES Act money for, um, hiring through September and October.
I'll withdraw my motion, um, as well, because I think we should stop fresh.
Well, your motion would still carry, you're just admitting it to be coming out of, uh, straight professional salary.
So, can I, may I? So, but, again, I, I'm not so sure procedurally there's a need for it, if you, it's already budgeted in professional salaries and is a, money's already there, the superintendent has authority within that budget to hire any positions he feels he needs for the district, they're not, that, I mean, we've already approved this budget, you, you have it in your professional salary line, so if there was a need to hire any position, you could use that money within your professional salary lines to hire a position, right?
Correct.
Unless it wasn't a newly, a new position, it would require a job description, we, then we'd have to take that up.
Well, any new position you, you, you would approve normally, so this would just give us the ability to hire, you know, in this case, up to two posi- essentially up to two positions.
Right, but the money, the professional.
The money's available.
Right.
There's, there's no doubt.
All right. I yield.
The reason why I think we need to, uh, we approve the budget with X amount of F T Es, so right now, we, let's say we have thirty SACs in the district, what this is doing, and the motion I think that needs to happen, is that we're going to allow on the superintendent to spend up to a hundred and twenty thousand dollars in additional F T Es, that's where, let's say he had five hundred thousand in savings, he can't come back to us next month and say, "Oh, by the way, I spent it because I had the money," we have to approve the F T E increase, we'd have a department that he, uh, he has, uh, so I think that's procedurally what needs to happen, so I'll make a motion that we allow the superintendent to add F T Es up to a hundred and twenty thousand dollars out of the operating budget between now and the next meeting.
Boy of order? Mr. Mayor, how many motions do we have? Okay, no, we have one, the one he just made. That's the only, the others have been withdrawn, he withdrew and Kevin withdrew his first one. We have one. Kevin's motion is to, to hire two full-time F T Es with a hundred and twenty thousand dollars.
Up to a hundred and twenty thousand, if, if he had to hire three pairs, so be it, you know, right? And I think that needs to happen, otherwise, it, it's a violation of the school committee budgetary responsibilities, we, we've created F T Es across the whole budget, we can't just add whatever F T Es you want, that's what we created in the budget, so if you're adding F T Es, it has to come before the committee, it's not that complicated.
Just a point, just a point of information, we've never approved F T Es, because if there's, there's breakage in that professional salary lines, it could result in two F T Es with that same dollar amount, so, we've never restricted the superintendent in his full-year tenure to approving a set number of F T Es, we've given him a professional salaries that's represented a number of positions across the district that he's identified for us, but I think to start setting, you know, practice where we approve every F T E, that's going to hamstring the superintendent on, on any hire that he needs to make, because it, it certainly will exceed F T Es, and he'll have to come back to us every time. He has a budget, he's got to live within it, and I'm just saying, if you have a top teacher salary that leaves the district and that salary now gets broken into two positions, what you're saying is that he can only hire one person with that money and has to come back to us and hire, ask us for another F T E.
Exactly.
I'm saying that, in my opinion, that's way too restrictive, he's got his budget, his professional salaries lines, he's got to live within it, if he wants to exceed that and ask the committee to transfer money from somewhere else to, to fill that void, then he's got to do that, either quarterly or if he feels the need prior to that, he's got to come before us, but I, I won't support, you know, setting a, a number of F T Es that we're going to hamstring the superintendent and, and his ability to hire if we put that kind of constraint on it, but, that's just my opinion, but, there's a motion there, I don't know if it'll get a second, but.
Kev?
So, Mr. Almeida, if we have breakage, whatever you want to call it, of five hundred thousand dollars, do you have the authority to add positions up to that amount, ever? thousand dollars, do you have the authority to add positions up to that amount, ever?
The only positions that we add are positions that are typically special ed-related positions, and it's only based on, like, IEPs, and in those situations, we will inform the school committee when those situations arise.
They'll inform us.
When there are new position needs that, you know, are requested as things come up, and as they are needed for students, we will come to the school committee and ask for approval.
Right. So, first off, there's multiple problems here. One is, we, as a school committee, have a fiduciary responsibility to manage the budget.
Correct.
So, when we pass a budget for any school, the school has thirty-seven teachers, or whatever it is, you can't just add teachers because you've got the money in that budget. We approve line item budgets. What the vice chairman's trying to say is, you have the authority to just spend up to that budget. That was a Nick Fisher thing that he tried to create X years about, it was crazy. So, if what the vice chair's saying is true, you can just spend whatever the hell you want, and come to us and let us know. That's not how it works, that's not how it should work. I don't understand why we're having that discussion, but if we have, if we on this committee do not have a policy that we approve the FTEs in each line item in every single building, if that's the case, that's the ruling, then we need to bring this on the next agenda to create some more checks and balances, because this could get out of hand if you could just hire whoever the hell you want, as long as we had money in the budget. I'm trying to say, you get one hundred and twenty thousand, you brought it to us for a reason. If what he's saying is true, we wouldn't have had to bring this, you could've just kept hiring. You bring it because you're adding another school adjustment council, let's say. You come before us, we'll add one. It doesn't say you have the money.
But he brought it to us.
I just don't understand why, one, why it's here, and two, why it's such a big deal. If we should be approving the FTEs, if we don't approve the FTEs in the budget, health insurance goes up, all this other stuff goes up, outside of the control of this committee? That's what our policies say? If that's the case, I'd like to find out where the policy is that was created many, many years ago, that we create X amount of FTEs in the district. I'd find it very much bizarre that we could even consider that you can spend whatever you want without coming back to this committee for new additional positions. Ayil.
So, it's not spend what they want, they have an approved budget for professional salaries. If they have teachers that leave for retirement, or whatever reason, they moved from one district to another, and they leave a vacancy behind, if that salary money is in the professional salaries line account, and the superintendent has to hire another teacher, he doesn't have to come back to the school committee to do that.
For that one teacher, to replace that one position.
Right.
That's what I'm saying, one for one.
But if he's got professional salary lines...
One for one.
If he's got professional, if he's got the money in a professional salary line, the need for him to have to come back to us to ask us to fill positions within the district, he'll be here every month with new positions.
One for one, Mr. Vice Chairman.
No, I understand one for one.
You're saying he could do two for one, and we can't have anything to say about it? That's what you're trying to say.
Right, but as long as he stays within his professional salaries.
So, you're telling me, and him, and Kevin Almeida, that you guys can spend the two, one person retires, but he retired at eighty-five grand, I'll hire two first-year teachers at thirty-seven grand, and this committee has nothing to say about it? That's what you're trying to say?
You do it budget time, and you do...
At budget time.
And you do during, any time there's a transfer request that comes before this committee, you'll have an opportunity to weigh in on whether you wanna transfer the money or not.
They have to bring it. What you're saying is they could do it. You don't have any checks and balances at that point.
Of course you do.
Bruce, do you know what the...
Depends on what the policy is. The committee has a lot of policy, whether it's by FTEs or by money, but not having a policy, it'd be impossible to tell them.
Right. And years ago, we did. You're right, Mr. Aga, years ago, we did. We had a policy in place because the committee didn't trust the financial director at the time, we didn't trust the superintendent, and we felt the need to be more restrictive and set a policy in place that suggested that every FTE was accounted for, and if you wanted to create, if you wanted to hire another teacher, even if you had the money, and it was in addition to what the FTEs were approved by the committee, you had to come for approval. I'm just saying that in the four years that Dr. Malone's been here, every budget that's come before us, we haven't approved a set number of FTEs. What we've said is, what's the need in the district? And he said, well, I need teachers here, I'm gonna bring forward teachers, because I had to add teachers in this particular school or that school, and this is the budget amount, and we've agreed to it and said, okay, that's your budget amount for professional salaries, and we've approved the budget. Never do I recall in the last four years, any motions coming before us to say, you got FTE X and FTE Y in this school or that school, and that's what you have to stick to, and if you wanna hire above that, you have to come back to the committee. I don't think the record would ever reflect that. I'm just saying, I agree with you. Back in the day, when everybody was scratching their head trying to figure out what our financial director, back at the time, was saying to us, yeah, we said enough is enough. We're tired of these games, we set policy, every FTE, now you bring back to the committee, and we approve. I thought it hamstring, hamstrung the superintendent then, but I think it was needed. I don't necessarily know that that's the case now, I think they've been very transparent with their spending. Any positions that they approved, they let us know. We just asked, is the money in the professional salaries lines, and it is. And so, I don't understand why we're now gonna ask the superintendent and Mr. Almeida to come back every meeting and say, well, I needed a teacher at X school or Y school, I needed a special ed teacher here, or I needed a SAC, and as a result, I'm bringing it forward for approval. I think that's gonna hamstring their ability to run the district. That's just my opinion, but Ayil.
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead, Kev.
Why do we have a line item budget? Why do we go through the process of creating a budget, sitting with the principals and saying, okay, you need X amount of this, and then we, okay, we can fit that in the budget? Why would we go through all that if it didn't matter? At that point, we would just be approving a budget that says, here's the total for each line item, one page. We approve a one hundred and some-page document because it has the line items in it, so inherently, what we're approving is the line items. I don't understand where, if there was a policy, I guess the committee got rid of it. I think that's crazy, it makes no sense, but somebody's gotta look at it, because if there's no policy, we're creating a situation where it's not one person retires, and we fill that position. I don't understand where this, you can get two or three for one is coming from, but we're going on and on about this. I think our fiduciary responsibility is to manage the district, including healthcare and all that. I don't think we should be having, if this is the case, I'd like it to be on the next agenda as a full discussion item.
And I'll just say this, Mr. Aga, listen, I think we all wanna fulfill our fiduciary responsibilities, and we will, and we have, but I think what you're mistaking is line item for FTE. We don't have FTE line items, we have line items for professional salaries within those schools. We don't have a set number of FTEs for that line item, you're right. We do have a budget with line items, but those line items don't represent a set number of FTEs. It's the salaries at that time for that school, but if the school needs another teacher, what you're saying is they're gonna have to come back and ask us to approve that. All I'm saying is, if it's in their line item that we approved, if it's in that line item, and I think there's a difference between line item and FTEs, we don't approve FTE lines, we approve salary lines, supplies, et cetera, et cetera. So, I think that's where maybe there's some disagreement, but I...
I think the committee should go, I encourage all my committee members to go back to the budget and look at the presentation from the superintendent, which was a nice presentation. In it, he says, human capital. One year it was fourteen hundred and something, fifteen hundred and something, there's a whole spot that says, here's our human capital. Look at that, and then you'll see that this is what our duty should be.
All right, so...
I don't think he's doing anything wrong, I think he's trying to just be upfront, so if you guys are saying you don't wanna vote to approve it, just go and prove whatever you want, but please put it on the agenda the next meeting. Ayil.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second approving?
We don't need it.
That's what I'm saying, we're leaving off. We ended up with...
I made a motion, nobody seconded it.
Okay, that was that one.
So, at that point, call for a second, if nobody says they wanna second it again...
Eleven point five.
Go ahead, you don't wanna do if I do share responsibility, then don't second it, and just let it be.
Eleven point five. Moving on.
I made a motion, is there a second?
Done? No.
Oh, you asked for it, so you say, is there a second?
I know, I know, no.
Does anybody wanna second that motion? You obviously...
Hey, Kev, 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 come on.
I'm just asking you to call for a second.
And no one's calling for one.
Right, so you say, is...
So, move the vote, move the question, please.
We're moving on, we're moving on.
I'm not gonna move the question, nobody seconded the motion.
We said that, we agreed.
Okay, that's all I wanted you to do, thank you very much.
I know, that's fine, you said it a number of times. Okay, so where do we stand on one hundred and twenty? You can just, according to Kevin, if you guys need those two positions, you can bring it in out of professional salaries, we don't even need this motion. Correct? Is that how that ended up?
I believe it's...
I believe that's the way of the committee, so, yeah, next item.
So, just very clear that we'll follow the same protocol, we'll come back to committee based on what and if we spend, and we'll let you know.
Yep, anyhow.
Yeah, but we'll let you know anyway.
Okay. Discussion number eleven point five is a discussion and vote to approve the Massachusetts Association of School Committee Recommended Policy Updates for the Commonwealth of Massachusetts School Department, as referred by the Policy Subcommittee and presented by Dr. Matthew Malone, Superintendent of School.
Motion to approve.
I have a motion.
Second it.
I have a motion and second. Any discussion on this item, Kevin?
Can someone explain what this is? I tried to read through the minutes of the meeting, and it was a very convoluted discussion on certain things that were recommended, but then not recommended, I just, I'm not sure what we're voting on.
The first batch, may I?
Yeah, go ahead.
All right, the first batch that we're requesting are all recommended from MASC. These were, there were some language changes and updating based on new and current laws. These, we brought forward as, in a bundle, to accept outright by the committee. And lengthy discussion, these have all been vetted, and we're happy with the work of that subcommittee.
So, there's a few that are just, there's only a few, and then there's other ones that come...
So, this is, right, we're gonna do this in three different batches. So, this first batch is a simple, MASC says, you should replace all your new policies, you should adopt these policies because of the language changes. So, that's what this first batch is.
All right, so that's eleven point five. Any more discussion on item eleven point five? Deb, please call the roll.
Mr. Aga?
Yes.
Mr. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Harp?
Yes.
Mr. Hetzel?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Ms. Larve?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. Eleven point six, a discussion and vote to approve the removal or maintain of policies as referred by the Policy Subcommittee and presented by Dr. Matthew Malone.
Okay, this is an interesting batch, that these are policies that MASC says we can get rid of. However, our committee said, let's bring them to the committee, we have two choices, we can remove, or we can vote to keep these policies on file. So, we're not getting rid of them, we're just putting them on file.
Unless the committee wants to.
Unless the committee wants to get rid of them. So, you have two choices here. I would propose to the committee that they vote to put these on file.
So moved.
So moved, we have a second.
Second.
Any discussion, Kev?
What are these, what was the controversy?
These are old policies, that new, the new policies already take out the language, so by holding, by holding them on file, there's, we still have the ability to draw on them if we need to, but they're not in our policy manual, they're in an appendix of that.
Just a point of information, they also may be redundant, there may be language that speaks to other policies that have...
Right, they're redundant, that's what...
...dislanguage in those, therefore, they'd be redundant, but rather than getting rid of them, we'll put them on file within our policy manual, if we have to draw for them, we can, as opposed to having to bring them back later.
But they're not contradictory?
I don't think they're contradictory, I think they're just redundant.
There's just some redundancy in language.
And you wanna put them on, I thought you said on fire for us, but you said filed, so like, keep them on the...
File, yeah, to hold them in a bane, they're on file.
Right, but it's not like we're doing anything that's gonna conflict with what...
No.
Got it.
Further, Deb, please call the roll.
Mr. Aga?
Yes.
Mr. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Harp?
Yes.
Mr. Hetzel?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Ms. Larve?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. Eleven point seven is a discussion and vote to approve to consider the adoption of new policies of the foreign public schools as referred by the Policy Subcommittee and presented by Dr. Matthew Malone.
So, these are new policies, I would like to draw your attention to IHBHE, which is the fourth page, one, two, three. This, we had debate with the committee, this is about remote learning, and this is a new policy from MASC, and what we agreed in through discussion is that the superintendent may declare such emergency that we move to remote learning, but the superintendent must, within forty-eight hours, call a special meeting in the school committee and obtain approval of the school committee for longer term. We agree that that was a joint collaborative way to govern, and we included that, and you can see it highlighted in yellow. The rest were all approved by MASC and Attorney Joyce.
Motion to approve as presented as a first read.
Second it.
Tom?
Discussion. Okay, so, as far as this motion is concerned, the recommended new policies for eleven point seven, I did bring up at the subcommittee meeting, another potential new policy as new business, how would that be forwarded?
So, I'll, as you know, I'm gonna be working on that, and I'm gonna have a small committee that you're gonna be working on as well, and I don't know if there was another school committee member, and then I would bring it first to this policy subcommittee, and then to the full committee, and this is around expectations of work between adults and students after hours.
Thank you very much, Ayil, Mr. Chairman.
Anything further?
This is first read, so it'll come back second read next month, so I have time between now to ask other questions. Thank you, Ayil.
Deb, please call the, oh, go ahead.
I'll just say that typically with policy, we do a first read, and a final read cleanup, and then adoption, so members have an opportunity to look through it more thoroughly and ask questions, but Ayil.
Deb?
Mr. Aga?
Yes.
Mr. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Harp?
Yes.
Mr. Hetzel?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Ms. Larve?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. Eleven point eight is a discussion and vote to approve the use of the Durfee High School parking lot to hold the Halloween drive-in movie night as presented by Ken Pacheco.
I'm gonna make a motion to approve, along with a caveat that the money for any overtime comes out of the school use of buildings fund.
Second.
Second. What's the movie?
Hold on, wait, wait, wait.
What's the movie, Mr. Mayor?
Hocus Pocus.
There you go.
There you go.
Who's the star, Mr. Chairman?
You.
There you go.
All right, so hold on. That does, we gotta go with Kevin's motion first, I guess. Was there a second on that one, to amend it so the money comes out of the schools? I just, I'll probably vote no on that one, Kevin, because I think when people do use the school facilities, they should be charged. We disagree, we've had this discussion before, and I think the taxpayers shouldn't have to fund this. We're gonna have some, we have some funds we've raised for this, so we can more than pay our own way, but if that passes, it passes. That's how I look at it. So, it's on the amendment, Deb, that, Mr. Aga, I put forward to have the city pay for the event. Schools, the schools pay for the event, not the city. Do we have a motion and second on that?
There was a second, Mr. Corey.
There was a second, I call the roll, Deb, please.
Mr. Aga?
Yes.
Mr. Costa?
No.
Mr. Harp?
No.
Mr. Hetzel?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Ms. Larve?
No.
Mayor Coogan?
No.
It didn't pass.
Now, on the using of the parking lot?
Motion to approve the use of the Durfee High School parking lot to hold the Halloween drive-in movie.
Second.
Discussion, Deb, please call the roll.
Discussion.
Oh, I'm sorry, Kev, go ahead.
Just wanna say why I feel quite strongly that we should be paying the bill. We're a city, we, this is a city event, this is taking the place of something, as if I read it accordingly, CD rec's not doing their Halloween party, it's gonna be done under, with COVID restrictions in mind, it's a city event. Why in the hell we would have the mayor, whether it's this mayor or any mayor, having to pay for a city event on our schools for our children, when we have money in our use of schools account, that would pay for another nonprofit or other reasons why there's community and civic events that happen in the schools? Why we would say, no, let's take it out of city money, is, and Mayor and I disagree with this, but I'm just being honest, I don't see why we're gonna take it out of the, out of any kind of other funds. We have the money in our use of schools, it's a city event, and I don't think he should be having to pay for it last time, or anything, so I'm gonna vote no on this, but Ayil.
All right, Kev, I'm only saying that because it is, it, to be a truly city event, it would have to be open to the whole city, and we're only serving four hundred, four hundred cars, so there's a heck of a lot more people in the city than four hundred cars, so if it was, as you said, thirty, forty thousand people, I'd be a hundred percent with you, but this is only a small number of people that are fortunate enough to get in, and I don't think paying overtime for the guys that are kind enough to come out and work on a Friday night is the end of the world. And if I, and if I was short any kind of money, I know I'd go to you and you'd help any kind of money, I know I'd go to you and you'd help me. So we'll leave it at that. And I'm being serious. I think you would. Deb, please call the roll.
Mr. Agia?
No.
Mr. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Har?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Ms. Larve?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. Bombing right along. Discussion and vote to approve the first quarter revolving fund as presented by Kevin Almeida, Chief Financial Officer.
So we have our quarterly revolving fund in front of you. Each fund has a positive balance, and we are in good standing.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and second discussion, Kevin?
I can't read it, but what is the total amount and balance of use of schools?
Two-hundred-and-thirty-eight thousand dollars.
Okay. The, the question I had was on school lunch. A while back, I think it might have been around a year ago, we had a discussion about trying to make that program self-sufficient. And we had money that we charged off to the school lunch, and then another year's gone by. Do you know offhand, or can you get us how much money was charged off to that account?
I don't know offhand. I'd have, I'd have to get that to you.
Yeah, you know the question, though, right? Like custodians and some other thing?
Put it in Friday's memo.
Yeah, I'm just curious about that, because I do think at some point, with a hefty balance in that account, at some point, we need to look at that being self-sufficient, as I mentioned at a prior meeting. So if we can put that back on our radar, I'd appreciate it. With that, Ayil, thank you.
Need for a discussion on the quarterly report? Deb, please call the roll.
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Har?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Ms. Larve?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. Discussion number eleven point ten, vote to approve the year-to-date budget report as presented by Kevin Almeida.
Second. Well, I make a motion, sorry.
You made the motion to approve. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second. Any discussion, Kev?
So I, on my computer there, I couldn't read the, the whole sheet. So on the line for professional salaries that we were just discussing, if we pay for every single individual for the whole year, what's left over in that account as we speak?
I don't have it in front of me at the moment, but I do have it calculated.
Yep. So this is the monthly report that we get that is supposed to tell us what, where we're at for the entire year. So that number, whatever that number is, to go back to our other discussion, could be spent without this committee's approval. And I'd like to, if you can get that in the Friday memo as well, I would appreciate it. I had a question on the attachment for healthcare.
Yes.
It looks like, if I'm reading this correctly, and correct me if I'm wrong, that we're currently projecting a four-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar deficit in healthcare, or to the good?
To the good.
So we're spending less than what we had anticipated still.
Yes.
And FY twenty, actual twenty-two-point-two million?
Yes.
Was that what was, like, where does that fit with what we talked about at the meeting about, you know, I know the end-of-the-year report's not due for another time?
So the, so the end-of-the-year report still has to be completed, and I, and we got to see where everything falls out, so.
What's it looking like now, not to hold you?
I'm not, I'm still, I'm honestly still working on it. I, I don't even want to, you know, put a number out there, but, you know, the original healthcare amount was about a million dollars less than what we had originally projected, you know, last year. So that, along with whatever else happens, well, the number will fall out for the end of the report.
But we took care of some of that, right, with the city already?
What's that?
Didn't we take care of some of that money? The city gave us money during the year? We're still a million off?
Yes.
Even after all's said and done?
Yes.
I got it. So whenever you get that, if you could get it to us, it's just.
Absolutely.
Healthcare's a big number. With that, Ayil, thank you very much.
Deb, a motion and second. Please call the roll.
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Har?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Ms. Larve?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. We have a number of retirements, resignations, appointments for years.
Motion to accept and place.
Second.
Place on file. I got a motion and second. Deb, please call the roll.
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Har?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Ms. Larve?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. Any new business to come before the committee tonight? Tom?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I wanted to thank you so much for having a moment of silence earlier for former Superintendent Rick Pavo. Many of us knew Rick very, very well. His work was diligent in our city. He was dedicated to close to forty years of service to the Fall River Public Schools. Started out as a school teacher, ended up as our superintendent, and I worked with him very closely in my career. He was a gentleman, and he truly supported all those who worked around him. So I just wanted to say thank you, Mr. Chairman, for having that moment of silence. And I wanted to just send out my condolences to Rick's family in, in, in memory of a very great leader for our city. Thank you very much. With that, I yield.
Do we have a reason to go into executive session?
Yes, there would. Mr. Mayor, at your direction, I can read them.
Okay.
National Law Chapter Thirty-Eight, Section Twenty-One-A-Seven, to review and approve executive session committee minutes for the September fourteenth, two thousand and twenty regular meeting of the Fall River School Committee. National Law Chapter Thirty-Eight, Section Twenty-One-A-Seven, to review and approve executive session committee minutes for the September twenty-third, two thousand and twenty special meeting of the Fall River School Committee. National Law Chapter Thirty-Eight, Section Twenty-One-A-Three, to discuss strategy with respect to potential litigation relative to the transportation contracts with Trembley Bus in, out of District Seven D van transportation, Amrell Bus, typical education, yellow buses, and Wheeling City in-district special education bus, summer bus transportation, and bus monitors as the chair has determined that an open session may have a detrimental impact on the litigation position of the committee. National Law Chapter Thirty-Eight, Section Twenty-One-A-Three, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining relative to all civil service clerical employees of the Fall River School System represented by the Fall River Department of Civil Service Clerical Employees Association, as the chair has determined that an open session may have a detrimental impact on the bargaining position of the committee. National Law Chapter Thirty-Eight, Section Twenty-One-A-Three, to discuss strategy with respect to collective barg-
I think we lost the quorum. One, two, three. No, we still have it. Go ahead. I'm sorry.
Okay. To discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining relative to all paraprofessional employees of the Fall River School System represented by the Fall River Federation of Paraprofessionals, as the chair has determined that an open session may have a detrimental impact on a bargaining position of the committee. National Law Chapter Thirty-Eight, Section Twenty-One-A-Three, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining relative to all administrators and employees represented by the Fall River Administrators Association, as the chair has determined that an open session may have a detrimental impact on a bargaining position of the committee. National Law Chapter Thirty-Eight, Section Twenty-One-A-Three, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining relative to all professional teaching employees of the Fall River School System, including coaches, Title One teachers, nurses, occupational physical therapists, and specialists in the teaching profession, represented by the Fall River Educators Association, as the chair has determined that an open session may have a detrimental impact on the bargaining position of the committee. Also, National Law Chapter Thirty-A, Section Twenty-One-A-Two, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel and/or to conduct contract negotiations with non-union personnel, including Sonia Barrerius, Instructional Support Liaison, Leslie Cavalo, Instructional Support Liaison, Kristi LaPlante, Instructional Support Liaison, Andrew Martin, Instructional Support Liaison, Ronald Thomas, Instructional Support Liaison, and Linda Cenaro, Administrative Assistant for the Office of Instruction. The committee would reconvene. There may or may not be statements at that time.
I'll entertain a motion and second to go into executive session.
So move. Make that motion.
Second.
Motion to second. Deb, please call the roll.
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Har?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Ms. Larve?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. I'd like to call a meeting back to order. Deb, please call the roll.
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Costa?
Here.
Mr. Har?
Here.
Mr. Hudson?
I thought so.
Here.
Mr. Corey?
Here.
Ms. Larve?
Here.
Mayor Coogan?
Yep. Anything to come before the committee?